This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is Wednesday, the 10th, 19th rather of November. And I'm calling this meeting together or to order at 6:30 PM. Planning members present from my left.
Lynda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Tim Jennings.
Nate Miller.
Paul Bianco.
Bill Griffin, alternate.
Craig Conklin, alternate.
Ben Jorgensen, alternate.
Staff.
Rob Taylor, staff.
Okay. I have a lot of people. I see some new faces. So I want to explain exactly where we are in the process of the public hearing for Laramie Farms. We are in what's known as the design review phase. According to State RSA, the design review phase involves reviewing specific design and engineering details. So that's what we have been doing for the last three sessions. Our goal tonight is to do water drainage, exterior lighting and signs, dimensional guidelines, and water supply. And if we can push beyond this, going through our design criteria and get it knocked out tonight, that will be a wonderful thing. According to the State RSA, and the number is 676,4, Roman numeral 2B, for those of you who are interested, "The board may establish reasonable rules of procedure relating to the design review process. And statements made by planning board members shall not be the basis for disqualifying, also known as recusal, said members or invalidating any action taken. The design review phase is not binding upon the applicant or upon the planning board." We have in our town planning board rules of procedure, we have a section on public hearings. I will highlight four important points that relate to tonight's hearing. Any applicant, any abuser, or any person with a direct interest in the matter may testify in person or in writing. Other persons may testify as permitted by the chairman at each hearing. The chairman shall recognize members of the public who wish to speak for or against the application. I interpret that also to mean members of the public who might have questions. The chairman shall recognize all members of the public who wish to speak before allowing additional rounds of comments from the public. The chairman may limit the time allowed for each member of the public to comment as long as all members of the public are recognized. So those are the ground rules. And when we get to the time where we're talking to the public and allowing questions or comments, we'll try to alternate between those people that are here in person and those people that are joining us on the team's video platform. Rob, how many people do we have joining us online?
So 10?
10, okay. So, all of that housekeeping having been said, I am reopening the hearing on Laramie Farms. D.C. Development and Construction, Stephen Dougherty, duly authorized, and Maple Street Enfield Acquisition LLC, John Debedo, duly authorized, are seeking major site plan review approval to construct 80 townhouses and 222 apartments. This development is to be called Laramie Farms. The subject parcels are located at 107 Maple Street, Tax Map 14, lots 47 and 48, totaling 77.1 acres and are owned by Maple Street Enfield Acquisition LLC. So, let's get started. Carl, welcome back.
Welcome. May I approach the bench?
You may. Uh, Lynda?
Can I go up?
Hang on, Lynda?
I would like to recuse myself at this time.
I think that would be appropriate, you being an abuser. Thank you. All right, Carl, you want to start?
Elevates an alternate.
That is probably a good idea. Ben, would you be an alternate tonight?
Be happy to.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Go ahead.
Okay.
Let's start with water drainage.
Yes, my name is Carl Dubay, and I'm going to try to talk as loud as I can so people can hear if I'm not loud enough, tell me if I'm too loud. With me also is Scott Kimball. And you want to introduce yourself also?
Sure, I'm here just to support and answer questions about the lighting design. Any questions you guys might have about that?
And you did the design with Heidi?
Correct, in my office.
Okay, and your office?
Visible light, sorry, yeah. Visible light, we're lighting, we provide design consulting services, products, that sort of thing, for projects like this and other.
Okay, so where we left off on the schedule, and interrupt me at any time, but we're under Section 5, so Mr. Chair, you are correct, obviously. We are in preliminary design, and under Article 5, there's standards and requirements for preliminary design under the Site Plan Review Regulations. And those criteria are five, 1 through 5. 20? 518, okay. So a lot of this is intertwined. Obviously, these criteria are also intertwined, and they have aspects that relate to one another as well. So we got through a bunch of those already. And in preliminary design, we're trying to establish the framework of the general design of the project. And then the next step after that, we would commence with final design, and we'd have another set of hearings with the planning board. And that's when we, you know, get into the final design, all the detailing of all those aspects, and delivering what we said we were going to deliver. And that also includes permitting with the state agencies and that type of thing. So that would all be, you know, underway shortly. But so under preliminary design, we're basically going through concepts of aspects of different items. And where we left off, Mr. Chair, was on drainage. I think 5.6, you call it water drainage, but it's really drainage because there's another water section. I didn't want to confuse the water drainage with water, you know, domestic waters of life.
Right.
So under drainage, there are some subsections, there's four subsections, but basically it's talking about handling surface and subsurface waters and storm drainage, and that would not adversely affect the abutting properties or the town facilities or groundwater resources. So that premise is perfectly aligned with the state requirements for AOT. So you've heard the word AOT a lot, AOT permitting. So anytime that we're basically on a larger project, we would be triggering an AOT permit from the state NHTES. The AOT permit criteria is basically framed around your criteria. Your criteria align perfectly with the state criteria. Sometimes they don't, sometimes they do. So you are perfectly aligned with that. And so under Section 1, Section 2, we're not going to increase drainage on other properties. We would, we don't need easements on other people's properties. There's a stream going through the property, sometimes it's dry, sometimes it's wet. We're not affecting that adversely. And then the last item is designed to the state of New Hampshire, site-specific standards. Now, site-specific standards, that was a term that they used years ago. Now it's called alteration of terrain standards. But back in the day, we used to call it site-specific permit. That's why you see site-specific, and it's capitalized because it's actually a real permit, but now it's called AOT. So those four criteria, and we talked about this at length, all the way from day one, including with CBA and the CONCOM, is that this site is pre-designed for all of that. We're not coming in with a concept that doesn't show grading and anything. Even the preliminary design, we have several wet ponds on the site, several practices that we're pre-designing for, which would include the entire stormwater drainage treatment terrain, all the way from roof water through parking areas, through access driveways, everything. The AOT criteria keeps changing. It keeps getting harder and harder to do because they keep adding more and more treatment and protection provisions to the regulations. And that's great, we embrace that. And we will absolutely design to those standards. So any approval that you may give this project in the future under final design would automatically have an attachment to it that basically says it's conditioned on receiving an AOT permit. That AOT permit is very, very strong, it's very protective. There's EPA added items into that for stormwater protection, for treatment, not only for permanent, but also operation and maintenance moving forward, which the whole site would be maintained appropriately through the laws on that, as well as construction. So on construction phases, there's certain provisions that we need to meet on that. And it's all under the umbrella of AOT. AOT also has the umbrella and input through fishing game, New Hampshire Fishing Game as well, and they like to see certain things on project designs, and we work with them very closely, and we do that, we deliver on that. So that's really the drainage. And you've seen a lot, we talked a lot about drainage. We have extra room in here for extra capacity, for extra treatment, for, you know, taking the slopes and revegetating them into natural positions so that we keep this development as tight as possible in terms of, you know, reducing lawns, reducing fertilization, and actually, you know, having the capacity for the drainage for surface and subsurface. I'd like to mention that we did indeed follow up on the access road design where we're not moving any streams or anything, we're actually putting culverts in, open bottom culverts, natural stream bed, just like you walked over when you did the sidewalk with the natural stone. All of that would stay, be rebuilt where the road is going over the stream, but the stream itself would be in its exact location that it is now, obviously. And that would meet all the criteria, we've all worked out. So, I mean, in summary, we go on and on about drainage. I love drainage, I love treatment, I love all that that we do, and this is a great project to demonstrate what we can do for all of those technologies and practices, and BMPs, just management practices, and we'd absolutely deliver on those. And you can see the bones of that in our preliminary design, which you should be able to expect that we would have that in our plans, and we indeed do. We show basic piping, you know, catch basin locations, all of that is still preliminary, but the ponds, all the grading is shown. And then we have, we pre-designed extra space on this project so we could put in extra treatment under the pavement as well. So all of those aspects on pretreatment and recharge and control of volume metrics, pre and post, all of that are embedded, already set up for this preliminary design per the AOT standards and per your standards. I don't know if you wanted me to keep going and then open up for questions or comments or?
Are you going to keep going on drainage?
No, I'm pretty much, that's a summary, but you know, we go hours for drainage if you want, but I don't think you want to.
I'm not interested in hours, but I do have a couple of questions for you, and then we'll see if the board has questions, and then see if there are any questions or comments from the public, actually have been in the past. So my question, is any water after all of the treatments and recharging of subsurface water, et cetera, is the design for any water to go off of the property?
Well, the design requirements are to, the water goes off the property now in its existing form, so we want to maintain that water flow, the characteristics of that water flow that come onto our property and through our property and then off our property. Those characteristics are modeled in an extensive drainage model and calculations. Those are extensively reviewed. A lot of, a lot of work is put into that reflective of, you know, onsite soil conditions and test pitting and data that we are forced to use by the federal and state. And all that data is coming in very nicely. And so there's water coming off our site already. That water needs to be controlled so that the rate and type and quality of water is met by the state standards along our property lines and any design point. So we have several design points coming off the property that we're modeling in great detail. So those, that water flow needs to keep going. We can't, you know, we can't hold back all the water, nor should we, because there's resources and assets down gradient from us along Maple Street, for example, that the water flows through now, and then it goes under Maple Street through a system of swales and some culverts under Maple Street, and we're modeling all of those. And those go out on the opposite side of Maple Street, as you guys all know, into this swamp area that then goes into the lake. So it's a process of water flow, and we need to honor that and keep that going. But what we cannot do is alter the characteristics of that adversely. So we can't just, you know, increase drainage and let it go. We can't do that. Nor can we hold back all the drainage and dry things up. There's a balance, and the design has to reflect the balance of that at all design location points. So that the water that is originating on our site, and we take that in consideration, we capture that water that's going into our development, say a parking area or rooftop, and we isolate that water and treat that water to state standards, and then put it back into the ponds, put it back into the groundwater and that type of thing. So what we like to do is, as part of this design, is we have a lot of water coming onto our site and then through our site. Many times, we like to intercept that water that's coming onto our site and keep it separated from our new water, and keep that characteristic going and hand it off as it goes down the hill. So we do that a lot in our design. You'll see that in our design already where we capture water, intercepts whales at the high end of our site and route that through. And sometimes we can route it in similar piping, sometimes we have to separate it completely. Sometimes we're serial, sometimes we're parallel, but that continues to go, so that's considered clean water, obviously. But the water that we take, we want to treat it at its point as much as possible. We capture it, treat it. So if you start mixing water and then try to treat it, you're just mixing a lot of water, so you're actually treating, it's less efficient to treat. So we want to capture our own water, treat it, and handle it by pretreating it and then putting it through a treatment train, and then discharging it at the same rate that it was before. So there's a lot of calculations involved. They review all of this extensively. And in our design, we also have provisions so that we can adjust and control that as things happen, because, you know, sometimes you don't know what's going to happen. Sometimes you want more water fed through the system, sometimes you want less, but we do have the inherent capacity to monitor that and also to control it. In this design, we also have a bunch of underdrains. We have smaller outlet pipes that spread the water out. We don't need to do that, but it's good practice. So, you know, our neighbors and friends that live on Maple Street, I know that they would say, "Well, we got a lot of water coming down, and we don't like, we don't like so much water sometimes." And that water collects into the ditch along Maple Street, finds its way to culverts and keeps going. We are very respectful of that, that's why we've set up all our design points along the whole system there, not only on Maple Street, but also the seasonal stream that comes down through, from the up top, comes down through our site and down to our neighbor. And that stream, we want to preserve the characteristics of that stream as well. So anything going in or out of that stream from our property, we want to identify and treat it. So there won't be any additional post-development flow that's adverse compared to the pre-development flow. We have to model both conditions. And they get along with, they go on and on with criteria for that in the AOT modeling provision. And you're going to see in final design how all those calculations work, and those get reviewed extensively.
Can I, can I ask you, just to sum up, will the down gradient neighbors see more, less, or the same amount of runoff?
They'll see the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Tim, and then we'll go to Paul.
I'll let Ben's question. So a few years ago, that slope was fully wooded, and a clear-cut operation was done. So my question is, three or four years later, there's lots of young growth, pioneer growth that's come up. So at this point, would you say the water flow off of that hill is less, or more, or the same than when it was when the tree cover was?
That's a great question. So the AOT, well, I mean, we can calculate and calculate till the cows come home, right? But sometimes things happen in the field, like you can't perfectly model everything, and things happen, but there's a range of expectations, standards that we need to perform to. So one of those, and to your point, sir, is that AOT criteria requires that we do a look back. And I think one of our engineers in our office, they've been changing that, but I think it's even a 10-year look back. Don't quote me on that, I think it's either a five or 10-year look back. And they require us to provide proof of what this site looked like, say, 10 years ago. That's easy with, you know, Google Earth and all that other stuff and records. So, and we're required to model those conditions so that if things were wooded, they require us to model pre and post conditions comparatively to that condition. So in other words, if someone clear-cut a hillside and they think they're going to get some kind of a credit the next year or whatever, you don't get no credit. You have to model all those conditions. And as a matter of fact, with the CN numbers and the data, and I won't get too far into it, but sometimes those conditions are, actually help us in a way where if you clear-cut woods, depending on the woods, we went for the sidewalk. We walked through some old woods that were all like telephone poles, and it was just like, you could see forever, there was no ground cover. And so we have some trees, and they do suck up the water, but there's no ground cover, and a lot of that ground cover, a lot of that vegetation that you would see in a meadow, on a regrowth meadow, actually could have a better CN number and absorption because there's more square footage of vegetated material and other things in the ground that want to suck up that water. Trees do suck up a lot of water, but sometimes when you're in the old growth tree where there are a bunch of telephone poles and you can see for, you know, 300 feet, and there's absolutely nothing on the ground, very little, those characteristics, so we model both. Because we don't want people thinking that we're trying to take credit, like, you know, John might have had something cut or timber managed and then it's grown up as meadow. Oh, we're going to take those credits too. Well, we can't have it both ways. So the regulations are designed to make sure that our calculations reflect all of those criteria.
And so one final follow-up. I don't know if your plans include this, but I certainly would like to see, just for the benefit of kind of the larger picture, that you show the drainage ways in a larger map, all the way down to the Mascombe River. Maybe you're doing that, I don't know. Certainly would like to see, you know, how the flows leave your site and come into your site from north of you and all the way down Maple Street, where that, basically where it enters the Mascombe River. Well, there's nothing you can do about it once it leaves your site.
Many times in AOT permitting, the reviewers like to see that too. So, you know, they require certain mapping and certain scales. Many apartment projects, you'll see final designs done at 40 scale or even 50 scale. It's kind of old school, it's like you can't read the plans. You know, we're doing ours at, I think, 20 or 30 scale. That's all the technical details, which you can see, and we've already started that sheet setup. On the macro view, we do the same thing. So we show the big picture because the reviewers all demand it. They require us to do the macro scales, overall, where's this project in relation to the overall topography and the hillsides and the capturing, everything, all the way down through. Fishing game also require it. So when we do that permitting and that final design with their review that's attached to the AOT permitting process, they require all that as well. They want to see what's going on through the whole system, and we show.
Okay. Paul Bianco, your question.
Quick question, Carl. When you say that the water, the runoff is treated, how is that done?
Well, so if you go, there's three design manuals that primarily, that the AOT folks make us use, and one of those design manuals has all in there the treatment practices. So it's sort of, it's a good manual to read, like, it's great reading. I love it. Because they not only showed us, you know, pretty pictures of things, like different, there's different tools in our toolbox for treatment. And say there's, you know, 60 different tools for treatment, different things that you can do to add to your project that are most appropriate to control the stuff. And what we do is we try to pick the right tools to fit the project most efficiently, and they're sensitive to everything. So the treatment practices, we call them practices, you know, they just say, I don't know, there's probably at least 50 of them, and they range from treatment swales, which is basically a long, flat swale with vegetated matter through it, all, you know, simple as that, to wet ponds, to extended detention basins, to hybrid basins, to other treatment practices that are more mechanical, like oil-water separators. There's, there's systems that we can put under the ground, under paving and fill that are, you know, for example, Storm Tech systems that have recharge capacity, they have isolator rows, and so there's a train of treatment that we want to utilize. And you can't just do all your treatment in one spot. They don't make, they don't allow you to do that anymore. So if a water, a drop of water hits the pavement or the ground or something, or a roof, it goes to a system, and it has to be processed with calculations on TSS removal and other things to get to a certain point where it's considered treated.
I was going to ask, what are you treating it for?
That's a good question. Because normally on a managed site, we're not dumping sand everywhere, you know, we're not polluting, we're not, we're not polluting the water. It's treatment in terms of construction. Usually, construction is the most important part. When you're building the thing, you don't want to put siltation or anything like that into a system that doesn't want to be there, especially for recharge or anything out of those systems. You don't want to clog a system. But basically, when we have, when we end up with a site and it's privately managed and properly done on construction, there's really not a lot. There are M&amp;O practices, maintenance and operation. But they, you know, say, there might be, in the first flush, they call it, in a, you know, a little rainstorm, that's where a lot of the treatment takes place that we want to make sure that we hold, like, I mean, people's cars are usually clean now, we're talking, you know, people are like dripping oil or whatever, heavy detail, and usually you don't see that in residential development, especially in something like this. But if anything happened, does that water, where does that water go? Does it go into a basin that can handle that with separating, separators? So, you know, we can use, you know, Storm Tech systems, which actually separate TSS removal, which is total suspended solids. They also will separate deleterious material, floatables, oils, you know, micro elements like that, or even big ones, soak it up. And then that water goes through, you know, a hood system as well, and then that could go into a piping system or a recharge system, or even a wet pond. Actually, a wet pond is a great treatment tool that's recognized, but has to be pretreated before you put something in the wet pond. But wet ponds are great. They have so much vegetated matter that soak up things, and the actual water in the wet pond helps treat flow as well. But you're absolutely right, this, we still have to meet certain standards for what they call treatment. And that would be, I mean, some towns say that...
What are you trying to mitigate?
We're trying to make sure that anything that we put into the ground or anything on the surface, that we don't let it soak in if it doesn't, if it's not meant to soak into the ground, if there's, you say, oily material or if there's siltation. Sometimes you just get leaf litter that comes into a system that, you know, we want to keep everything swept.
Or salt?
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the project is designed correctly, we don't have to be dumping a lot of salt or sand onto a project if it's really maintained really, really well as a private development.
So your treatments, getting rid of sediment, materials?
Yeah.
Oils, stuff that could come off the driveway, the roof, that's what they're trying to get rid of? How would you do that?
One example.
Yeah.
How would you do it if, what would you plan for this project in terms of the parking lot? Where would that water go?
So, the parking lot, first step is, is keeping the parking lot clean and with, with management onsite. And then, we've all been in parking lots, you know, condos and apartments that are look really, really good and are clean. There's other ones that are like, oh my God, there's like crap everywhere, right? But it has to be clean. And then if it's captured, I think this project mostly has curbing, so we, we're not doing sheet flow off a parking lot and just letting it dribble out into someplace. We want to capture that water into catch basins. And those catch basins could have hoods in them, they could have, there's a number of different kinds of catch basins. So, with deep sumps, we can put them in, also, you know, storm scepter type mechanical catch basins that have devices that are patented that, that keep the water, you know, the first flush of water clean, cleaner. But, you know, we usually don't see a lot of anything really coming into these things. But then from that catch basin, that ties into another catch basin, or could be serial apparel into a pipe, that might go into a storm scepter system, which is under the pavement, that, that actually goes into an isolator row first. And then that fills up, and then that goes through a bunch of filtration media, and then that spreads out into other rows of the storm scepter system that provide detention, retention, recharge. Once it's cleaned and put through filters, then it can be recharged into the ground because we, there's a requirement, we shall recharge water back into the ground. We have to do that. And the groundwater is relatively high out there, so we'd have to do that in our fill areas, and we're doing. And then for overflow devices to mimic the different storm events that we're required to do, those have outlet control devices that allow water to, to go through into other devices, depending on the storm event and the wa, the water rate and volume. And then those systems, you know, would normally go into, say, a wet pond. A lot of our areas that have, that have to do work, which is really on a residential parking area, will go through those areas into the wet ponds. We're not going to let them just go out into the wetlands.
So, this process is in the preliminary design?
It's in the final design.
It's in the final.
Right. But in the final design, which you'll see, we, we've already started to set the project up with the grading and layout for that. So, if a reviewing engineer saw our preliminary plans, they, he or she would know what we're doing and why we're doing it. We're reserving areas, we're, we're pre-planning areas. You can see our pipes and everything, outlet control devices and all that type of thing. So, they, they can actually see, he or she can see what our design intent would be to manage that flow, to have extra like belts and suspenders. And then now we're in modeling and final design to actually model all those pieces so they all work together so that we have enough, you know, to meet your standards.
To pick the, one of the 50 methods?
Yeah.
Drainage water.
Yep. Yep. And the design manual, you know, when we go to final design, we can show you the manuals. They're pretty fun. They're online and they have pretty pictures of them, all different types of things. They have bullet items of what, you know, it's basically different tools in your toolbox. So, depending on the project you're doing, you're going to pick the right tool for it. And that's, it's kind of fun to do that. And then we put that through all the drainage modeling software and calculations.
Derek? Thank you.
Question on your calcul, when you're doing your calculations, what rainfall events, number of years are you using? And what sources of data are you using for that number of years?
There are several different storm events that we have to design to. And don't quote me on this because I have people in our office that are smarter than me, but, but I think there's, for instance, there's a two-year storm, there's a 10-year storm.
Okay, so what's the maximum?
There's a 25-year storm, a 50-year storm. So, certain things have to be modeled to, there's even a 100-year storm, obviously. And people say, what's a 100-year storm? We get those all the time. But there's certain standards they make us model to. And so, certain ponds have to be designed to certain storm events. So, up, up through the 100-year storm, I believe. And, and each of our model points have to pass pre and post equalization on each one of those storms. Because many times, it's kind of a dirty little secret, designing for a 50-year storm is pretty easy when you just put, put a lot of stuff to it, right? Put a lot of volume. But that might not be the design storm that's critical for us in terms of treatment or even flow. Sometimes the two-year storm is more a, a higher hurdle to get through in terms of the design of the entire system. So, they make us check all those storms. And then they have something called the extreme, this extreme storm event. We have to do that too. So, they, you know, raise the bar on that because you can see different storms doing different things more frequently. So, we have extreme events also. And you have, you're in a zone of the state that requires a certain type of storm and storm pattern, and we have to use that pattern per the state requirements. And so, we have to do that as well. So, yeah, it's very, very complex, but they, they make us, you'll see when we go to the final design, you're going to see the pre-imposed storm events all designed. There's like 2, 10, 25, 50, at least four of them.
The other part of my question is, there's different sources of data that is used and some are basically out of date, but they're still, still out there.
Yes. So, that's, they have different types of storms. So, if you can imagine, you know, the, the, if you model a storm, it has a certain type of peak. Some storms are just like, like a long slow, and it's long and slow, and then, you know, it's a very flat curve. Other storms have a big, a high intensity peak, and we've all lived through those. So, I think this, for instance, a type 3 storm, and I think the AOT criteria makes us use that. It's a, it's a very high, strong peak. So, there's all these different kinds of storm events we have to model through as well. And I like the type 3, which has a heavy peak that we have to make sure that we meet.
This study that I recall, recall off the top of my head, that's the most recent numbers is, I believe, out of Cornell, New York University, the Northeast Storm Rain Events, something to that effect. And those, those numbers are just, more rain per, per events in what was done 10, even 15, 10, 15 years ago. The numbers are just higher, which is what?
That's correct.
Which we are seeing.
Yeah.
It's just, so that's basically, if we're using old data, it's not going to, you know, you're just going to get bad, you're going to get bad information.
You're absolutely right.
Oh, yeah. I just want to make sure that we're using numbers that are the most accurate. So, what's happening today?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay.
Derek had a question?
Yeah. So, what are the maintenance, given all the features you're going to be building, what are the maintenance expectations and planning for the ponds, culverts, and other drainage features?
So, every design practice has a standard set of MNO, or maintenance and operations expectations. And the state requires us to put together an MNO package that reflects every single aspect of those practices. And that, that MNO report and requirements, especially in construction, with a, what they call a SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Control Plan, and packaging, and phasing, all of that is required in the permit and inspected and reported on, and, and then forevermore with the site. So, if something's not being done properly on the site, that's technically a violation of the approved site plan, which then can go into enforcement. And everything else that goes into enforcement and with courts and police officers and everything else. But, you know, on a, on a managed site like this, they, they, they're very particular on that. And, but that MNO packaging is a requirement as part of the AOT permit, and that's something you're going to be seeing and you're going to be reviewing as well.
Yeah, that was my follow-up.
Yes.
That will be part of the submission package, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Nate, I don't think you've asked one yet.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just want to hone back in briefly on the kind of, you know, threshold of not adversely affecting abutting properties. And, and because it's something that we've heard a lot about, maybe more than any other aspect of stormwater related to this project, is potential for adverse effects for the abutting properties on Maple Street specifically. Can you walk us through, two minutes, how and why you've designed the wet ponds and infrastructure that we can kind of see on that easel, but in the site plan? The way that you have in order to prevent adverse impacts to those Maple Street properties?
And that's a good question. So, adverse impacts, there's, so the state has, and the feds have created certain guidelines for all of that, standards. Because how do you define adverse, right? So, the state says, well, we're going to define it this way, and you're going to perform to certain criteria. Because it's proven that if you perform to that criteria, then, you know, chances are statistically, you, you will cover your legal responsibilities for adverse, you know, adverse impacts. And there's, you know, there's definitions on adverse and how they define adverse through case law and everything else, including in the regulations. So, we have, so number one, we have to meet the regulations. And now on, a case like this where Maple Street does have water in it, you know, there's, the homes along Maple Street, that we've heard them, you know, say, and we respect that, saying, well, there's water out there and a lot of it coming down the hill and all of that. And, and that's the way it is. It is, that's, that's correct. Their observations and what they're living every day is there's water coming down off the hill. And so, when we first started the design on this project, we wanted to make sure that we had room reserved between our strip of parking and buildings and the Maple Street neighbors would, you know, we have a lot of room there, which is totally reserved just for drainage and pond structures and everything, so that we can at least capture our water, because water goes down, flows downhill. We all know that. We want to capture that water and have extra volumetric capacity on that water, notwithstanding treatment. But just having that capacity always is good to have, even if we have extra. So, that's what we're modeling right now. There is water coming off that hill, a lot of it, and there will continue to be water coming down off that hill. We, we can't stop that water. But we just, there's certain standards we need to meet to not create adverse conditions. And they quantify that, and we have to meet those, those quantifications. They, they make us do that and we deliver on that. But things change statistically, you know, things dry up, and we're like, oh, you know, you just never know through the decades or years and things get worse. But on our design, we specifically reserved volumetric space for that, but we have no development. And all we're doing is ponds to have that extra capacity. Where, you know, there was a previous approved project on this that, that was all housing, everything. Every square inch of it was housing. And we're not doing that. We're keeping the development up higher on our property so that we can reserve those spaces for volumetrics. I think the adverse thing really would be volumetric. And that's why we're really focusing in on the volumetrics.
So, so in your professional opinion, as an engineer, the design that you're putting forward, in your professional opinion, would not create any adverse impacts under the, the standards of the, of the regulations to?
Correct.
Be abutting Main Street, or Maple Street properties?
Yes. Correct. Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah, two, two questions. Are there requirements either short-term or even longer-term after the product's built for any sort of water qua, water quality testing, runoff testing?
There usually, there wouldn't, there would not be requirements for that on an AOT permit unless there was something wrong with the water quality, or unless that we had a, a project that was considered to be, there's a term for it, I can't think of the name, but it's a, a high propensity to be a problem in terms of water quality. Residential townhouses and apartments aren't in that category. It's not like we're doing, you know, oil change facility, any of that type of stuff. But some projects, gas station, you know, some projects do trigger a monitoring program. But there's no requirement for that. Like the gentleman said, it's townhouses and apartment building with strip of parking, so.
Lastly, I think it would, just for the benefit of everyone listening, you just very briefly touch on the fact that we have a third-party engineer and how that's going to, or how they are going to review your work on behalf of the board.
So, in any town or city we work in, they have typically a third-party review engineer. So, the, the town hires who they want to review a project independently. And they, they work, he or she, that, that firm works for you. And our client, we, we pay the bill. But they're working for you. They're not working for us, they're not working with us, they're working for you. And independent, truly independent engineering firm, that, that's what they do as well. Like, they, they know, it's like having another mechanic look at your car, a second opinion, or, you know, medical professional, something like that. Everyone has an opinion, but there's certain standards you have to meet. So, we actually welcome those third-party reviews. We consider ourselves, you know, pretty good engineers, and we welcome working with anybody who has a review. So, so we get the review by the state, and they're really, really tough. And they should be. That's their job. And we have to deliver on that quality. And then this town or the city would have a separate review engineer to do certain review items. And sometimes we get two different reviews, two different opinions, and we usually work it all out. You know, we usually take the worst case. But they're all professionals. And, you know, we welcome that, but we know that any review, any reviewer you hire that is reviewing to the standards is really reviewing to the AOT standards. And that's, that's our bible. Like, we have to, I shouldn't say bible, sorry. That, that's our standard that we have to go to. And it's a very, very tough standard to meet. And we, so we welcome that. So, yeah, and that goes for any of the aspects. I know you have your own, you know, water supply, you know, engineering, and, you know, we would use their recommendations.
Is our engineer engaged so far, or have you had?
Well, we, I have not talked to any third-party reviewing engineers myself because I wanted to keep that distance until you guys basically, you know, closed this portion of the parameters. And then I would not talk to any reviewing engineers that you would hire unless you told me to. So, we keep it totally above board, total open book. Anyone can walk in our office, anyone can, you know, take a look at our stuff and engage with our professionals at any time. Be nice if I knew if you're coming over. But usually, we go through, you know, the town staff and that type of thing, just for protocol. But, you know, we'd be happy to engage on pre-design, that, that happens a lot. And we have that interaction with a reviewing engineer. Sometimes we even have pre, pre-application meetings with the AOT folks as well, just so that we incorporate the things that they're looking for. And that's helpful for the whole team. It's helpful for our, for our client and the project and everything. So, you know, we, we've said that before, we welcome, welcome that.
Okay. Kurt, one final question, and then I have one, then we'll open it up to the public.
What happens if the project is completed, two, three years down afterwards, there's a major storm event, and the pot is on Maple Street?
Maple.
Maple Street. Say, we've never had this kind of flooding before.
I mean, but.
I mean, it's subjective. Until you do the engineering studies.
What if, what if, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
If certain things happen, I mean, we can't guarantee, no one can guarantee anything, but, you know, you know, like, you know, typically, like, I've never had water in my basement, and we didn't even have floods, and I had water in my basement for the first time two years ago. And I, I don't know why. Well, I'm going to blame it on my neighbor. It's like, because they built the house or something, but all these what ifs.
It's just.
Yeah, no one can guarantee anything but, for anything. And, you know, we, we hear, we see the stories. We, we know more about, you know, some of those items on Maple Street than, it, it's a very fluid situation out there. And, but I could tell you that our project would have extra volume, extra capacity for all of that. But still, something happened, like, how is that, you know, that's very difficult to, the standards are not a guarantee, but they're standards we have to meet. So, you know, if I get a heart transplant, the doctor's going to say, you know, know, if I get a heart transplant, the doctor's going to say, you know, they can't guarantee that, you know, something's going to go wrong with my heart, just, or even a mechanic on your car or anything.
Right, yeah.
There's no guarantee on it, but we do have to meet the laws. And, you know, and up and down Maple Street, the, the homes there and the, the drainage is there, the cross culverts, you know, they're already having some issues, but they do clear, but sometimes it takes time. But we want to model all of that. And there's no such thing as a guarantee, and things happen, but we will, there's a certain standard we have to meet, and we're going to meet those standards. And you guys can have your checks on all of that and reviews. A lot of times we get conflicting information, and then we find out that what was told wasn't correct, and wasn't the truth. And, you know, that's really difficult to maneuver through. But we, we will design to the standards and then some. And that, that's all we're, we can do. We can't guarantee anything.
Yeah, it was just, you know, just something that really, they fall heavily on the third-party engineer review, that's, that's, that the numbers are there to back outputs.
Yeah.
Protect something, to protect that from happening or to protect the town.
Well, the DES engineers will also review your permit, correct? Yes.
So I, I have one final question. Oftentimes, this being northern New Hampshire, or at least middle New Hampshire, you come home after driving through a snowstorm, and your car is covered with ice and salt in, in your fender wells, et cetera, et cetera. You pull into your garage, whether it's in your townhouse, or you have a space in the apartment building, eventually that stuff melts. I presume there would be a floor drain. Where does it go from there?
The townhouses would not have floor drains in the garages. Typically, when we build new townhomes or homes, we don't put floor drains in there. They have a slight coat pitched towards the door. In the apartment buildings, there would be, you know, premium garage spaces in there, where you can drive in, you're protected. You get out of your car and go into the elevator and up to your unit, and stuff that might be collected on the undercarriage of the car, you know, there'd be a little bit of melt. I mean, there's, there's, there's always going to be some of that attached, salt or chunks of stuff, or, you know, just a little bit of bleed off and melt that goes into the floor drains of an apartment building garage. Those would have floor drains. Those do have oil-water separators that are separate from the plumbing, and the plumbing code requires all of that separated. Those floor drains, I believe, would go into the sewer system, and they would not be discharged into the onsite drainage system. So that's all by code.
Okay.
So none of that melt-off goes into the drainage system.
Okay. I think we've exhausted questions from the board, and it's time to take questions or comments from the general public. I will ask that you identify yourself by name and where you live, and given the number of people that I think would like to speak, I'm going to ask that you try to keep your question to two minutes. I'll keep time. If you're almost done, I'll let you go over a little bit, but please try not to abuse it.
These are questions on drainage.
On drainage, yes. We're talking about drainage of stormwater. Linda, I saw your hand first.
Linda Jones, 159 U.S. Route 4. Carl, I'm sorry, but it still has to do with what goes into the drain. So I'm imagining in the parking lots that it's automotive chemicals you'd be concerned about collecting that would run off. And you described pretreating as, as channels underneath the parking lots in order to separate it. But if it's separating out those materials, how, how do you ever clean that system?
So I'm going to try to keep as short as I can. So on the parking lot, and these are not large parking lots, they're just a strip, an aisle with parking on both sides, and that's it. You know, it's not like a big retail parking, but, so those are typically 60 feet wide, so 24, 18, and 18. So that's collected and isolated, so it's not collecting anything else. Everything else is isolated, so we're just collecting that, that water into a catch basin system usually. And that has a process where it intercepts deleterious material or floatables or anything like that in that first, those catch basins. But also those catch basins have deep sumps, they would have, those have piping that go to other provisions. And if that's going into, say, a storm tech system, that goes into an isolator robe. So none of this stuff gets into the groundwater, because it's put through a treatment train of mechanical trains that it's not allowing those deleterious materials to get injected into the groundwater. Because if you go into a storm tech system, that has an isolator robe that, it's all wrapped in filter fabric and filter material, so that nothing can get through that. So you're not putting all this material through the entire system. You're keeping it isolated and capturing right away. And then as that water goes through its process, then it, it finally does get into recharge for the wet ponds and that type of thing. So that's.
Did you remove the, we'll call them just petroleum products?
I mean.
Where do they go?
The, so those get, those petroleum products are considered floatables. Some, some could sink, but we have methods for that too. But usually that's a hood system or a capture system, hydrodynamic. It could be.
Are they going to, are they going to the sewer, or are they going to the ground?
The, the drainage for a parking lot would go into the stormwater system by regulation. We cannot put drainage from a parking lot into the sewer. We're not allowed to do that unless you're in a confined overflow system in the city of Manchester, for example.
I think she's asking what happens to the floatables that you catch.
Those get isolated in the unit, and those get then removed. We, it's part of the M and O program where it gets absorbed, and then we remove those absorbent materials.
You remove the fabric.
Yeah, but typically, we don't see, we really don't see any of that. Yeah, we really don't see any, any petroleum products coming off cars in a high-end apartment complex or townhouses that are going to be of any consequence at all. You know, you just don't see it. I mean, just like at your house, I mean, do you see a lot of oil coming off your house?
No.
You know, right. I mean, there's standards we have to abide by, which are pretty strict on, on terms of that, much more than you would normally see anywhere.
Okay. Steve Patton?
I'm Steve Patton, Livingston Lodge Road. So by definition, filter, filters don't trap anything. So you're going to cut this whole hillside off and make it steeper, much steeper than it is, and that's going to show a lot of groundwater that comes down to the hill, and it's going to trickle into impermeable parking lots and such. So you're going to take this whole piece of ground that's now permeable, and you're going to make it a lot of it impermeable, and you're going to put it in these ponds, and you're going to concentrate the outfall. So when it's concentrated, it's also, well, it's going to come out heavier. So Maple Street is the only problem here. The pond that's closest to Route 4, the culvert leaves that pond at the bottom of the pond according to your plans, and has minimum pitch into a manhole, have Route 4, which will cross the street, it'll go across the field, and eventually, are we willing to lose Oak Grove Street? I wonder.
Well.
Carl, can you respond to that?
You laid out several items there. I don't want to spend too much time, but.
I really don't need an answer. I just wanted everyone to understand this.
Sir, your statements, though, I disagree with. We're, we are not making the slopes collect water that spill out onto the impervious areas. Those slopes are collecting water previous to the impervious areas and collecting, and then we're dealing with that water that comes off. So we're not letting things spill onto our impervious areas. And also, we're not collecting to a point load, to point outlets. So in between all of that, which you haven't seen yet on the plans, because this is preliminary, going to the design final, is infiltration practices that are linear across the entire transverse section of that project, that would recharge water as well. So I think you're, you're doing some summaries, which are great. I respect what you're saying, but we're not just charging steeper slope waters onto our impervious surfaces and then dealing with them. We're separating that water, intercepting it before it does that. Also, the ponds are not the only thing that we're having for outlets, and we have several outlets actually going along all along that area, including the infiltration systems, which you see as boxes on the plan right now. I mean, this is a preliminary plan, but you, you can, you see a lot of information on a preliminary plan. Usually a planning board would close this preliminary hearing with none of that information shown. We're doing this as, out of respect, but the preliminary checklist for preliminary acceptance on site plan, there's nowhere near the level of detail we're talking about here. We're going along because we're confident and we want to share the information with you, but for you to say that we're doing certain things that you just listed off, we are not. I just want to say that. I don't agree with what you're saying, but I understand that if you just saw what you saw on a plan, you think that the water's spilling out onto things, and you only have point outlets, that's not true. We can get into that, but I'd like to engage with you on final design that show that that's not true. So the pond down at the bottom of the, of the site near Route 4, that is a pond without the control structures, and those structures limit the water coming out to limit the pre- and post-development flows on peak flows as well. And the water goes down there anyhow, and we have to, it's one of our design points that we have to evaluate to make sure that we're calculating that those, the extra water down at that pond is not leaving. We're, we're containing our water, our differential. If the water does go through that, as you know, it goes through in those systems. Those systems do cross over Route 4, and, you know, we're making the Route 4 improvements as well as the drainage improvements along that corridor. It'd all be integrated. We're not showing that detail yet, but we show a lot more detail than any other town or city would to accept the preliminary plan. But I respect what you're saying, sir. Yes, I do.
Rob, is there anybody online that has anything that they would like to add?
See, hands up.
What, no hands up?
No, on top.
Okay. Dan Regan?
Dan Regan, I thought one of the best questions asked was by Kurt, and it was about Maple Street, what the guarantees are two or three years down the road. I thought your answer was disturbing. Saying that there's no guarantees in that planning happens two or three years after you complete the project, you're out to any responsibility?
That's not true. There, there are no guarantees, but if there's something that we cause that's adverse to, to the standards, that's different. You know, we're not, that, that's not disturbing. I, what I said, they asked me, are there guarantees? And I said, there are no guarantees, but we still have to meet standards.
I heard that.
So I, I don't want, appreciate you twisting my words on that, but I just want to make sure that someone's saying that somewhere, you know, that, you know, there, there's certain standards we need to meet.
I heard that.
And, and there's issues already on Maple Street. We're not going to make them any worse.
Sorry, I don't believe I twisted your words. You gave the example that if a seller flooded, you didn't know what happened, it could have been the guy at your store. That's not going to be satisfactory to the people on Maple Street two or three years from now if there's an issue, and you guys just say, we don't want it to happen. That's not satisfactory.
That, that, you're correct.
I would encourage the planning board to, before granting an approval, ensure that we have more of a guarantee for the people on Maple Street, that if something does happen, that we help them out.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Well, that was just my first thing. My colleague here, Carl, took up a little bit of my time. The other thing was, New Hampshire's lakes are under stress, and the last 10 years have been detrimental to our lakes. One of the major things is the salt increase in the lakes. Can you tell us how your approach has changed over the last 10 years in looking at this project to ensure that the salt in the parking lot does not end up in our lakes? They're very important to us.
Absolutely. One of the programs that we're going to be implementing on this project is the certified green snow pro standards. So anybody on that site maintaining, doing the, we call the winter maintenance, because it's not just snowplowing, it's everything. The winter maintenance is usually when people start putting salt, you know, using salt. They're not using salt usually during the summer. But it's the, it's the NHGES certified program that anybody on a vendor basis, we would hire a vendor that's certified green snow pro certification process on that, and it's a very long process to go through, and there's certain standards for that, everything. That, that, there's guidelines and manuals about, you know, and they know, they're driving the truck, he or she driving the truck, and, or they're putting salt on the sidewalk or something, or some other chemical or whatever, that there's certain application rates, there's certain times to do it, and we all kind of know that. If we're older, we kind of know, you know, it's the middle of a snowstorm, you're not going to dump a big truckload of salt out there. You want to clean up as much as you can first, and clean that out. There's, there's brine application programs that have less salt impact and better safety. So that, this program would be part of that certified management program, which has been proven to extreme, you know, just basically limit and really reduce that salt that goes into a lake.
Would you be willing to want, monitor the water to ensure that it is happening correctly?
I think there's certain monitoring programs that we could subscribe to if it's a standard that the state recognizes that, you know, but usually they, they don't. You can kind of see what's going on. I mean, it's hard, I mean, Route 4, I'll give you an example, sir. So, you know, Route 4 is a state road. They put salt on that road, and that's in between us and the lake. So it's like, I don't know how, you know.
I never said the state was doing it well. I think our town is.
Right. Yeah, so, you know, I think there are, there's salt use for public safety, and, and we do respect the lake. We understand what you say, sir, about the, the salt in the lake, and, and we would do our part to, to, to those standards, including the certified program, to the extent there would be any monitoring. I, if there's a standard for that, then we'd be willing to look at it. But we just want to make sure that we're not subject to what people are doing, you know, downgrading from us on that.
Okay. My colleagues remind me that protocol requires that questions be addressed to the chair, and responses also should be made to the chair. Gentlemen in the back?
Thomas Lockevan Road. To reiterate on salt, I find it difficult to get to the conclusion beyond a reasonable doubt that this will not cause salt outlet based on, you know, hard top surface in the, in the development, land alteration, and so on, and downhill flow to the Route 4, a budding neighbor, and down into the Maple Street area. And we're talking about, in town terms, no, not adverse. And, you know, zero adversity is hard to get to beyond reasonable doubt. I find when you're laying out, if stuff is designed well, then there should be very minimal salt laid down, and the impact should be very low. Yes, yes and but. Um, yes, yes and buts, but I mean, whereas is proved that it's all hypotheses and without, once we can get the theory, then maybe I get on board, but we're all in hypotheses and those need to be tested and there's no way to test. So what is the standard to say there's going to be no adversity caused by? Um, I'd also like to know where all of the snow from filing the lots, even by these green, um, file companies, where that is all being put because that will inherently grab more penny salt that's laid down between the next pile cycle, salt goes down, next pile cycle, so on. If it's all taken off site, if it's stored onsite and then where those sites are for melt conditions flowing downhill. Uh, we have wetlands downhill, so salt in wetlands totally drastically changes the floor of fallout and that. And, you know, properties downhill may want to grow crops or do whatever gardens, salt greatly affects that.
Okay. That, that was your two minutes and we'll, we'll stop it right now. Um, Carl, would you like to address the snow?
Mr. Chair, we have, snow is section five eleven.
That's, that's what I was going to say.
We're not, we're not there yet. We're still on 5.6. We will get to snow.
I was, I was going to ask him to address that.
I think in the interest of time and, and what we have on our agenda, we need to press forward.
Okay.
Just drainage from snow, is that, that was, was what it was about in terms of where that drainage from melt off, where.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that, um, when we get to the snow storage section and we, we can address where that goes and how it affects drainage at that time. Um, ma'am?
Hi.
I don't know your name.
I'm Brenda Howard. I live on, uh, 68 Maple Street. Um, we've been here for 30 years and I've walked that road several times. Um, and I know that you said there's certain standards that have to be met, um, state standards and so on. Is there an opportunity to look at a comparison project that was similar to something like this where it was up a mountain, coming down a hill, similar problems like we already have on our road?
We might look at, um, lakeside condos. They're on the side of a mountain. And it's, yeah, I think it's the most similar thing that we have here in, in Enfield.
It doesn't have to be in this town. It could be a similar project somewhere else.
Those weren't designed with hardly any standards.
Next question.
All right. Another question? Gentlemen?
Hi, my name is Bruce Momnail. I live at 86 Maple Street. Right at the base of this, I've lived there about 25 years. My family and myself have built probably 10 or more homes in Enfield and Canaan, so I'm pretty familiar with what you're doing and I consider you incredibly professional. After living on Maple Street for 25 years, I've multiple times helped my neighbors and dug out the existing trenches that are there. You had mentioned that the system upstairs is not very good and I have to re-revise it. You also mentioned the water runs downhill. I'm at the bottom of that hill. That bothers me greatly, to say the least. The water's going to run down that hill, the water runs downhill. I'm not using your words. We have a failing system at the bottom of that hill now. When you do your project, it's going to fail worse. You and I both know that. What's going to happen with a drain system that's already failing? Are you going, planning on upgrading that or is it going to stay the way that it is and you have to let it out?
I mean, we'd like to have input from the town on that and, uh, from you, sir. I know there's ditches out there, there's wells, there's some culprits. Um, I mean, we, we'd be happy to accept your input.
Okay.
And what could be done. Um, I mean, it's a town road that everyone understands is not in great shape. Uh, there's certain things that I think, you know, we think that could be done and I'd just like to keep an open mind for that and, uh, and as we go into final design, if there's, you know, something we could do to help, we can consider that, uh, you know, but, uh, yeah.
I, I, I think that's a conversation that perhaps you and the public works department at the town should have, um, not in the context of this hearing, but one that should, should be had. Any other questions?
Can I just ask, if, if, if the Department of Public Works does have tangible recommendations or suggestions along those lines, I think it would be good for the planning board to know that when we head into final design.
Okay. We will get those from Jim Taylor.
Sharon. Very quick comment.
Sharon, do you have a question, comment?
Uh, Sharon Boffe, Enfield, quick comment. When you have your third party engineer review all of this information, the one concern I have that we've been talking about tonight, you don't have to answer my question, is mainly with all the excavating that's going to happen on that hill and the cutting of trees and retention ponds, which might be good or, I'm just thinking about our marsh well and where it's located. I know nothing about aquifers. I know nothing about the water that goes through that property and how that, whether that connects to the marsh well or not, but I'm just, that's a primary because we can't use the McConnell well. The marsh well is really important to us, so that's just a consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions on drainage? Anybody online? Okay. Let's go to lighting.
Okay. So, uh, in preface, uh, we, we provided actually a lighting design and a preliminary application. That's, that's not required, but we did. And as a matter of fact, we edited it, we revised it as we moved along. We provided all that lighting design information to the board. That included, uh, lighting photometrics and included, uh, details of the fixtures and all of that, uh, you know, much more than just a preliminary. Uh, so, uh, all that information was provided and supplemented to the board and, uh, it included on the last sheet, uh, tables and ratios and codes and, uh, heights and colors and all of that. So this is a residential style lighting design that Scott and Heidi did together. And, um, so Scott, if you want to just briefly go through the criteria for that and, you know, how, how our approach is and how the design is taking shape and, you know, as we get input from your reviewers and the board, as we make the final application, this lighting plan would be adjusted again, but, um, you know, it's, it's in pretty good shape. It's actually a very good residential, uh, quality design that is respectful and dark sky friendly. Take it away.
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, ultimately what we shoot for in spaces like this is just safety and security. We're not trying to overlight anything. It is just a residential type facility. Mainly want us to shoot more towards uniformity than overall brightness of a site. So it's, so it's comfortably lit, but it's not overlit. Um, like Carl mentioned, we're doing full cutoff fixtures, which means there's no light going up from the light fixture. All light's directed to the ground. Um, the lensing on these in particular fixtures are very, uh, you wouldn't, you don't even see any diodes if anybody's looked at LED lights. Sometimes you get a bright diode flash. It's a very soft, soft uniformly lit lens, so it's very quiet when you're under it. It doesn't create any, um, uncomfortable glare when you're under it. They're very low wattage and the main goal is just to provide appropriate lighting for the parking areas. Everything is 3,000 K, so it's a muted color temperature, so it's a warm color, much like you would have in your house, not bright white that, uh, sometimes people find somewhat offensive. Um, they're also very low, 16 feet, um, to keep it so they're not, uh, big, uh, parking lot style fixtures that are mounted up too high. Mostly on the roads are lit pretty uniformly. Parking areas are lit uniformly. The townhouses were mainly just spotlighting in between those spaces because those buildings themselves have alternate lighting on the building.
Is the road lighting motion sensitive?
Uh, no.
Could it be?
Not that it couldn't be, but it currently isn't designed that way, but, uh, again, preliminary, we can definitely look at something like that.
Um, during some of our preliminary discussions, Carl had mentioned that you and your partner on the lighting team, uh, thought that our requirements and our zoning regs were more than what you would recommend. Could you speak to that?
So mainly because we were getting, um, so there's kind of a high, medium, low that you guys have in your regs. Um, you know, looking at something like this, we would probably target more towards the low than the medium, just because it's not a, you know, I understand residential complex parking kind of falls into that and, and I would say in those areas where there is a main parking area, it is kind of lit to those standards, but I wouldn't treat the whole site that way. I would treat the site like a residential area. I would treat the parking lots as, so I would almost treat the space as multiple levels, right? So when you have a main parking area, you want that to be lit well. You want it to be lit uniform so that people are safe, not getting backed into or, you know, they don't feel uncomfortable going to their car. But as far as the rest of the site's concerned, I would say a more muted level is more comfortable for a site like this, especially near residential areas, that sort of thing.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments on lighting? Nate?
Looks like you have a light at the, um, Route 4 intersection with the site driveway around the bus shelter area. Can you explain kind of, is, is that light similar to the rest of the lighting or are you using a different type of?
It is similar to the rest of the lighting. Um, it is mainly just to create more of a highlight on that. If anybody's ever driven into entrances to any building when they're not, when the entrance isn't lit, it's, tends to get uncomfortable or difficult to see, so that would be why that is out there and to light that one little section of that bus shelter.
Okay. Because I agree with you that the lighting is going to be significant impact in the residential area, I would strongly consider lighting that dims itself when there's no motion and then comes up to the appropriate standards and then, uh, notches back down.
Yep. And we can look at, there are systems that we can look at that, um, allow us to group fixtures wirelessly, so basically you can have a different zones, right? You're not controlling the whole site. You control maybe the roadway, um, and parking lot separately, that sort of thing. But, uh, it's certainly something we can all talk about if that's a area that anybody wants to go down. Paul?
I'm just curious, is there computational modeling that can be used with the design plan that would actually show what the impact is of the degree of lighting?
Um, I guess I, I need a little more clarity on what you'd be looking for there.
So let's say we, we look at the, you know, we can, we can put together a 3D model of the apartment complex and then implement lighting into that model and then take an outward view of what that would look like. If the modeling doesn't exist, then.
So we can, we can do some rudimentary, uh, you know, dealing with the grades and the slopes and everything, but we can do, um, with our software, we, we can do where we model like the grass and the buildings. They wouldn't be perfectly modeled, but they would just be buildings and the roads and have it be more of a rendered view, which would show you, it would really, instead of like, when you're looking at these plans, you see these, uh, templates that come out. That's really kind of the spread of the fixtures. What you would see is, kind of what you would see is if you were in an aerial view of the light. Yeah, we are, that is possible. We can do that.
That would be great to give folks a better view of what the lighting effect will be.
I just want to manage expectations. We can't ma, model it as perfectly with the site and the elevation changes. It would be a flat site similar to what you see here, but instead of seeing points and just lines on a plan, you would see kind of a detailed road with the glow of a, of a light fixture.
Okay. Kurt?
Yeah. Um, one of the things I'm hoping you pay attention to is because your project is elevated from the surrounding houses, um, everything, all the other existing homes are, we will be looking up.
Sure.
At this and at the perimeter lighting, um, the, just pay attention to how many units you really need, because the other ones are going to be most visible.
Yep.
To anybody that's offsite.
So in a lot of cases, um, we have a number of, and I'd have to look through the plan to see where those are located, but we have house side shields on some of those. So if you are on the opposite side of the fixture looking up, it does provide almost like a scallop behind the fixture to just provide a little bit of cutoff, so you're not looking right at the, uh, the source of the fixture. Um, and, um, but yeah, we can definitely, uh, kind of hone in on a lot of that as well.
Anyone else from the board? Members of the public, questions or comments on lighting? Um, we'll take you.
My first.
You, you first.
Thank you. Brenda Howard, yes. Um, I'm just curious, I have no idea, but you know, at the end of Maple, there's, I'm not going to call it, it's a transfer station or wherever the electrical comes from, you know, where it floods all the time down.
Yeah.
Thank you. So will all the power come from that location or will they have to build another one?
I can't answer that, but I would assume it was all, it's all going to come from the site itself. The power? Yes, uh, for the lights, uh, they would be coming from the site, um, primarily Route 4.
Down with, with Maple Street?
At our, at our, Route 4, at our new driveway entrance.
Oh, okay. So a new one.
Yeah, yeah. There's not a new substation, it's coming off the line.
It's coming before it gets to the substation.
Yeah. Yeah, the site will have its own transformers feeding the site.
Okay.
Um, I am in favor of.
State your name again, please.
Thomas Lockett, Lock Haven Road. Uh, I am in favor of having a, um, aerial rendering done as was indicated, but I would also thinking of the abutters because aerial rendering where you're not getting the direct path to the light, you're going to have covering over it, so it's going to be diffused out. So it's not going to be a direct eye on light from down below. Um, for the abutters sake, I don't have an abutting property, but, uh, if a rendering could be done or a 3D model, not 3D, but just point to point mod, modeling based on what you may have for limitations of light and the lumens that they're putting out in a nighttime environment from each house, just if you could render that, that would be great. I, I know that.
I don't have those capabilities.
That may be asking a lot, but, but it's just thinking it's going to be worse from below than it is from.
I, I think he's answered your question in, in that it's beyond the technical capabilities.
It might be beyond my ability.
Okay. Well, I'd like the board to recognize that it's going to be worse from.
Yeah.
I believe it's going to be worse from below looking off at the light because you're not going to have the diffusion from above as the aerial rendering.
I will say with the brightness of the fixtures, we're not using, I mean, most of these fixtures are 50 watt light fixtures. They're not high, high output fixtures. It would probably be very similar to if you were looking in somebody's apartment window in the same complex. You know, you're looking in at somebody's light fixture that's on, in a three-story building or however tall these buildings are. It, it would be very similar to that experience and that would be the ones without the house side shields, the ones with, you'll have a lot more cutoff on that side.
Just real quick, 3,000 K, uh, would you consider going lower to get some more buttery light?
Um, you certainly can. I mean, it really is just a preference. Uh, 3,000 K is a very common, um, streetscape lighting. It's also very common home lighting. Uh, you know, the, the next step is really 2,700, which is only a 300 K difference. It's not a dramatic difference. They don't really do many fixtures any lower than that because then the efficiencies of the fixtures really start to die. Um, so in general, 3,000 is usually pretty, pretty warm on a site.
Maybe that's something that we might suggest is that, uh, put one up there of the two, two types, you know, small generator or something like that. See what we think. I mean, is there, is any reason from a developments point of view not to go a warmer color?
Um, I can't think of one. It's just, uh, it just generally, the fixtures aren't going to be, any site fixture, I'll speak to all site, site fixtures, there really isn't, you know, 3,000 K is usually the bottom. 2,700 K might be your very bottom. It tends to get a little too yellow at that point. Um, and you wouldn't really notice much of a difference between 27 and 3,000. When you're looking at the streetlights, you normally will see that people light their parking lots, you know, Masco High School or whatever, those are usually five or five, 5,000 or 4,000. They're very, very bright white. They're very, very bright white. Even if you're lighting your patio or your deck in the back of your house, you go to Lowe's or Home Depot and you buy a light and you can buy different colors. And usually the lowest you can get is, you might be able to get a 2,700, but usually they're 3,000. Then they go up 3,504. You know, you buy a light that has the switch on it, you know, you can see the differences. But you know, five is really, really bright. Six is almost blue. But it's hard to even buy a light that's 2,700 unless it's a very small, like a little reading light or, you know, a little tiny bulb or something. But usually a 3,000 is about as warm as you can get even in the industry just to buy the bulbs. But those are, they're as warm as you're going to be able to find unless you special order something. They're very yellowish, but that's good though. We want that residential feel, but not to the point where it's orange. And we've all done that before in the 80s and 90s and even get the orange lights. But certainly we don't want to go the blue, the blue side of things, which is six. And then five is really, really bright. That's like heavy retail hospitals. Four is getting there, but three is very, very, very warm. And like Scott mentioned, we're in that medium section in the regs. I mentioned to the board before about the regs. And I don't believe actually we would need a waiver on the regs because the regs call out for guidelines and recommendations. And then they say in the regs that the planning board can decide on the right thing. So we're stuck in this residential complex parking category, which is the medium category. But we don't want to be in the medium category. We don't need to be that bright. We don't need to be that intense. We want to be in your low impact category, which is certainly fine. So, and the regs allow you to actually make those decisions. So I don't think we're actually going to be needing waivers because we're actually trying to do, you know, even warmer and lower intensity.
Yes, okay. Anybody online have any questions, Rob?
Don't see any answers.
Okay, who else? Sir?
Keith Thomas, Shaker Boulevard. I'd like to know, I've seen in some other complexes, the way that they identify a condo at night is that they have a little small light that shows you what that, and it's not, it's not lit during the day, but at night it's lit so that you can tell. And that way you don't have to have a lot of lights otherwise. Okay, I don't know if you consider that.
Preferred directions and directional and things like that. I mean, there's all kinds of aesthetic lighting we could do that we can get into on the final design. That's a great idea. You know, this is basically the basic bones of regular lighting, site lighting standards. But if we talk about aesthetics and directional and identification lighting and everything, then that's a great idea.
That way if somebody is going all around the parking lot trying to find out where this place is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on lighting? Okay. Next are dimensional guidelines, most of which do not apply to your proposal. Certainly you've got your waiver or your variance on height. We're not dealing with septic systems or leach fields. And anything else that might be of concern, Carl?
No, we meet everything that's appropriate and applicable. And there's, you know, stopping site distance, everything inside the site as well. We meet all that criteria. You would be checking with the final designer and all of that anyhow. So all those items, items one through six, we meet. The last one I mentioned to the board earlier, there was one piece of, one section of one parking space, I believe, that is in a theoretical setback that if you called that a setback to parking, which is not in the regs, but we understand, we would take that one parking space out. But everything else, it would like totally, we're totally clean on all the dimensional criteria and then some. You actually allow us to do certain things that we're not doing. We're just giving you the full product that we're not trying to thin out anything on dimensions or any of that item.
Okay. Now we get, oh.
Can I just have a clarification? Aren't the, sorry, Glenn Derser, AT Seymour Farm. Aren't the four townhomes on Maple Street have septic systems? So doesn't that apply to any of this criteria here?
Yes, there are, there is one leach field for the, and we meet that criteria by the way.
I just want to make sure that there is a septic leach field in the design.
Yes, and that is, she's actually correct. There's, I'm sorry, there's one building on a septic system way up Maple Street. That, and there's criteria for dimensional setbacks for the leach field and all the water and wetlands and everything. We meet all of that criteria. And we already tested all that area for the septic design and everything and then we meet everything. Yes, good, good point. I should have brought that up.
Thanks, Glenn. Okay, now to the, I guess, the reason most people are here, which is water supply. I am told that a lot has happened in the last probably week or so. I have a memo from our Public Works Director, Jim Taylor, regarding water connection. And Jim, would you like to present that now? Or would Ed like to summarize where we are from the town's point of view?
Jim could talk a little bit, but as we put in our memos, that, you know, we're comfortable with the original 100 and 150 units that were presented. We have talked with the developers about as we look at this bigger thing that we'd like them to look at bringing some sort of water to the project via a well on their property or working with us to make the McConnell wells usable for drinking water, some filtration system, something like that. I think we just look at ways that they can help provide this. We do have water and Jim can speak a little bit more to what we can provide. What we don't want to do is throw everything we have at one project and not have anything else for other people. And so I'm pretty comfortable with that, but, you know, I get my information from Jim. So we could speak to him about the water system and where...
Rob, can you put that memo up on the screen?
Yes.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
I didn't get a copy of this memo.
I did not.
I'm the only one, I'm the only one.
Why is the board not receiving this information? With all due respect, I mean, this is...
May I answer your question?
This is, you know...
Because it didn't come until three, probably three o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
And I mean, it is dated November 17, which is today. And I happened to be in Rob's office and I asked him for an advanced copy, knowing full well that nobody else would have it.
It's a 19...
Yeah. Jim, do you want to speak to your memo on water connection?
Yeah, I mean, I was asked to do this. I would typically not do this as part of a phase two application. This is more of a phase three thing. But we felt it was important to at least weigh in on this. And so people had asked me, you know, and a lot of people have asked me in this room over the last few months as to the, you know, adequacy of our water supply. And, you know, I'm very comfortable right now with the original project number, which was around 150 units. That was a number that came to us back in 2006 when this project was first sort of conceived. The previous Public Works Director had looked at that back then and he was comfortable with that number. And I am now with that. Since I started in the Public Works Chair in 2010, when we started there, we had, we had two primary wells and two backup wells. And since then, we've brought one of the backup wells up to primary status. And so we're running three wells right now. They turn on at eight o'clock at night when the power rates drop. And they run for about seven hours, top off the tank, and then they shut off. And they're off until the next night at eight o'clock. And it's been running very consistently. I have good staff right now that have nailed down a lot of leaks. We've found a lot of leaks. We're using new technology that listens to fire hydrants and it can locate leaks for us. We have them in place at the moment right now and we're pretty tight. So, you know, this, the original 150 is roughly equivalent to what Lakeview flows. They're using about 8,600 gallons a day at Lakeview. And I would expect that this, this project, the first half of it, would probably use about that. And we currently are pumping about 64,000 gallons a day. So it would add, you know, eight to 10,000 to that. The second half of it, you know, I believe it's available, but as Ed said, it's, it comes down to, do we want to, you know, use all of the capacity on one project? And we have many other projects that have been in. Rob's been awfully busy lately with people coming in that are interested in doing projects. And so we felt it was not prudent to just say, yes, we have that. That we would look at Laramie Farms and try to work with them to find, you know, some water that would, you know, add enough to that to at least take care of themselves. And, you know, right now, you know, I feel like we have capacity. But that is certainly something that we would like the third-party engineer to look at, to see what, where we are at the moment, you know, in relationship to state standards for storage and for, you know, we don't want to be over pumping our wells and things. But again, you know, in the 15 years I've been Public Works Director, we're seeing less use per, per address or per, per connection. And I think some of that goes to demographics. I think some of it goes to decent water efficient fixtures that have been installed in a lot of places. Several years ago, I did a little, I don't know what you call it, I'm trying to think. Anyway, I'd taken what installing a low-flow toilet in a, in a property would mean and what the payback would be using endfield, you know, water rates. And, you know, it was about, it was about three quarters, it would pay for itself. And so I had a lot of folks saying, oh, I can't afford to have a plumber come and put in a new toilet for me. And I said, you can't afford not to have a plumber come in and install the toilet for you. And I think a lot of people have taken the advice. And, you know, some of the apartments, our biggest apartment is 60 Main Street. You know, they used to use 50, 60, 70,000 gallons a quarter. And they're in the 30th range now. And so, you know, we've just seen that kind of trend. In talking with the Laramie Farms representatives, I think that we understand that their wish is to put in the most energy-efficient fixtures and practices and things as they possibly can. And again, so I just, I, I'm comfortable with where we're at. And there still is the need to, you know, we should always be looking for water. If you're a water manager and you're not looking for water, you're not doing your job. And so, you know, we do have some opportunities to, we have a couple of new wells that are, have been drilled. They have not come online yet. That's probably going to be next summer. We have that water. We have, looking at treatment options for McConnell Well, which is, you know, we've had some quality issues with lately. And there are some decent treatments out there that we can get installed. It's, you know, fairly costly, but again, McConnell Well would double what we're doing right now. And I'll answer questions either, you know.
I just want to add to that if I can, just so the planning board knows that we have met with our third-party engineers and we've discussed this water concept, some different ideas of how, how water can be brought to our system. And they're definitely understanding, will continue to work with them and will continue to work with the Laramie Farm people if we move this forward to, to bring something to the table to make sure that the town stays in a, in a good place. We don't want to shift anywhere onto the, the rate payers for the water system. We want to make sure we have good quality water and enough of it.
Carl, anything you'd like to add from the developer's point of view?
We agree.
Okay.
We agree and support. I guess our client has to review the memo, but I think on an initial basis, we would agree with the memo outlining expectations. And those expectations are what we would expect. I mean, it's hard to say that, but that's a standard. And, you know, I would have liked to have you say that we can take all your water, but we understand that you're going to hold some back. And we have to work with you on, you know, advancing other options to increase that buffer. And that's what the memo says and certainly we, yeah, that's fine.
Would you expect that that work can, at least conceptually, would be completed and presented to the planning board as part of your final application?
Absolutely, yes. That's where it should be, yes.
Okay, very good. Board members, Nate?
Yeah, and I'm just seeing this for the first time. So I'm kind of reading it on the screen and I hope we can get substantive information in advance of the meetings so that we're not being surprised by this sort of thing in the future. Because it is important information and we need to be able to be prepared to have a substantive discussion about it rather than reading it on, on a computer screen in real time.
I read it, I read it at five o'clock.
Yeah.
Literally.
I understand you're in the same mood. That aside, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, the town currently has sufficient water capacity for potentially a portion of the project, but not the entire project currently. A study needs to take place of what the options are. And if I'm reading between the lines here, the options may be wells on the Laramie Farm property itself, potentially to add to the existing water supply. Or if that's not feasible, additional, construct facilities capable of, whether that's a treatment, a capital improvement to do treatment at the McConnell Well or other, you know, other options that may require a capital investment for existing water supplies. So this study is going to lay out what the preferred option would be, whether it is wells on your site that, that enhance the town's water capacity or capital improvements to McConnell Well or other options that may exist. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that's exists. We had a discussion the other day, pretty open, that I would like to see water come from their property if we can find some. But as Jim said, there's some treatment options for McConnell Well. We know there's a lot of water there. It does a really good job. So that's probably a really good second option. We'll work through that. I don't think we'll have to go any farther. But if we needed to go farther, we'd explore some other options as well.
Ben?
Just to summarize, the applicant is agreeing to create additional water sources necessary to cover the size of the project as proposed. Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe that's what you're hearing. And I think the two options are creating additional water capacity through onsite well on the applicant's property or through treatment or other mechanisms off-site, but that would enhance the town water system.
And David, who's doing the study?
It's our, our third-party engineer as far as I know. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Horizon.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Jim, I think, I heard, I heard you say, and this was, this was the thing I was looking for. So thank you for saying this. While you're comfortable that you could serve 150 units, you also followed it up by saying, and I'm paraphrasing here, that you want to establish the baseline by having the engineer actually run the calculations and showing what, and showing their work, showing their data of what the existing classifications of users use in town. And then what would be appropriate to, to use for an estimate for the developer. And then our capacity and all the factors that go into that so that we, you could, you could then not have to say, I'm comfortable... you could then, um, not have to say, I, I'm comfortable with this, but these are the actual numbers.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's perfect.
And I mean, you know, there's, there's a chance that, that, you know, the, the study could come back and say, yeah, we're comfortable adding these guys and adding these guys and these guys. I mean, a lot of it depends on what those numbers are. And I asked Mr. Dougherty to, to furnish some, you know, some information. I, I have Lakeview, I have Shaker Village, I have Enfield Village, but I don't have a new apartment building that has state-of-the-art stuff. I don't know what those numbers look like. My guess is they're going to be significantly less water users than, than some of the things that we see here in town at the moment. But again, that's, that's something that, that needs to be looked at, so.
Paul?
Question, Jim. You said that currently we're pumping 64,000 gallons per day-
That's correct.
-out of three wells served?
Yes.
Does that include the McConnelwell?
No.
It does not.
McConnelwell's in backup capacity only. We haven't had, it hasn't had, put water in the system for over six months. We typically use that when we have an emergency, like a, a major water break or a fire or something along those lines. Um, and so we, we will use it in those capacities or if one of the other wells goes down. And, um, but yes, it's, it's wonderful to have it in reserve because when you need it, you need it and, and we can turn it on and it, and it furnishes a lot of water.
How much water does it produce today?
Um, we have a pump in there that does about 150 gallons a minute.
Thank you, sir. Kirk?
Yeah. Um, it would be nice to know, well, I'm, on the, uh, third-party review for the co-insystem, well, I guess, let me rephrase this. Uh, you talk about, you only have limited amount of data for your enfields on water users, large-scale residential water users.
I mean, I, yeah, I, I mean, I have, I have those. I mean, just quartering, quartering out and getting data for, from-
Right. But the prices are older, older prices.
Correct.
Um, City of Lebanon has several large apartment complexes that have been online for several years. Those numbers should be available or you should be able to pick up the phone and get the guy to send you the numbers. Um, and that would be a good comparison.
I'll just add that I will be surprised if the, the water usage in a typical apartment up there is that much different than any of our existing apartments because the water rates are so high.
Right.
The landlords are all over it and they've already put the low flushes in and, you know, they watch those water bills closely. Maybe the, the tenant quality, uh, you know, how, how, um, how conscientious they are about water use? I don't know, but.
Yeah, I mean, my Lakeview is all individual privately owned, so it's not like a building-
If they're paying a high sewer bill and they're, they're paying attention.
Um, yeah, go ahead, Nate.
The, the first paragraph of the water connection section, I just want to, that last sentence, I want to dive into that a little bit and see if my understanding is correct and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong in my, my, um, analysis of that particular sentence. Securing a new water source would be the preferred option. So it is the preferred option potentially, if it works out, to have a new water source potentially on the Laramie Farm site. Though partnering with the town to enhance existing resources would be a viable alternative, I read that as McConnelwell treatment would be a viable alternative, not the preferred alternative because frankly, the, the water in the McConnelwell is known to be poor and the treatment options are probably a little more complex than we might, you know, otherwise anticipate in, in a normal scenario. Is that a fair reading of that sentence?
I'll take that one. When we were having our, our meeting last week with, with the developers, that, that was, that was my sentence. In those well protection areas, which we may or may not have water, if they have water there, that would be my preferred option because finding water sources is much harder than buying a filter for a water source we already have. So that would be my preferred option if it's something we can do. But it's really all going to depend on whether there's water there, is there water in the right spot? I mean, I think it's a lot harder option to say, yeah, we're just going to happen to have right in that well space that they have a really good vein to get some water. I don't think we need a, a super well there. I think a regular, pretty decent producing well would do it. So, um, we'll work with them to look. We've kind of already asked them to, to do a little bit of that preliminary work to start seeing if there's even the possibility of that. But yeah, I would say a preferred, a well to add to our water would be the, the number one preferred. And then helping us make McConnelwell usable would be a good second.
My, my quick analysis, running it out there, is a well that'll give you 20 per minute for eight hours a day is going to give you 9,600 gallons a day. If you can get up, if you can find, if you can do a well that gives you 20, 20 gallons per minute and he wants to run it eight hours a day because you don't want to run it more than that because the higher you get up, the worse it is, then you'd get close to 10,000 gallons a day.
Yeah, we were talking about that 20 to 30 gallon.
Yeah.
If we're in that range, it's probably a good enough well to, to offset what we're going to need to, to add on to this.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So I, I, I like what I'm hearing from the Public Works Department, Town Manager. Obviously, uh, the developer is, is, uh, working with you guys. Uh, it's the exact kind of plan I was hoping to see was going to, was going to happen. So, uh, so I'm, I'm satisfied that this issue is being addressed as it should.
Paul?
I agree with Tim. Having come from the desert southwest, so I just ran the calculation on the McConnelwell and it pretty much doubles your capacity if the water quality was satisfactory.
Oh, yeah.
And in my opinion, I think that, it certainly makes me feel better that we do have a buffer. Certainly be nice if we could find water on the site as well. But it takes, it takes from me the go-no-go that says that at least there's the possibility that we do have a water situation not solved. That would be an incorrect statement, but under control.
We, we have options to explore.
We have options.
And, you know, I, I would hope through the collaborative efforts of the developer and the town that a solution that is acceptable to all parties will be reached and, you know, it, it all depends on what the consulting engineer, third-party engineer, uh, what sort of data is developed from that engineering study. And, you know, finding water is-
It's hard.
It's hard. Some, it's, you know, let's use a dowsing rod. Sometimes that's even better. Any other board members have questions or comments on the current state of the water situation? All right. Members of the public, David Bouffet, I saw your hand first.
David Bouffet, Main Street. Um, Tim, in your letter of August 25th to the members of the planning, planning board, subsequently slightly revised, but not substantively in September, um, you raised the number of issues. It sounds like, um, many of those issues are being dealt with as currently proposed. Do you have other concerns that should be addressed that have not been from that, from those letters?
Yeah, I'm rapidly trying to remember what I wrote.
I have copies.
Yeah. Um, no, I, the, the basic concern I had is we didn't have a handle on what our capacity is currently and what we could accommodate in the future. And as long as the study is done and they present the data and show their work and this is how we arrive at the conclusions we do, they do, um, that's going to answer just a ton of questions and it'll put us all on the right footing to go forward.
Okay. Gene?
Jean Patton, Livingston, La Journeaux. I'm going to put on my budget hat, first of all, um, be the same in the rear that I usually am. But, um, anyways, I feel like, um, okay, we've gotten some more good information. Personally for me, this is my personal opinion, I would like to see the developer take care of their own water. We have enough challenges in our town. We have two amazing, phenomenal water guys. I don't want to see any more staff added to the water department. And I feel like they have plenty to do without having to take care of maintenance, pipes, whatever else up in the development. So I feel like the development needs to have their own water, take care of their own water and take care of their own maintenance and leave it at that. And, and as far as McConnelwell goes, um, I know that sometimes, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, that even during a drought, McConnelwell is mixed in with other, um, water. Is that right, Jim?
It has in the past, but not this time.
Yeah. I don't want any of that right-on water. I have enough in my own house that comes from the-
Oh, no, right-on's fine. It's the uranium.
Well, um, but anyways, that's my feeling as far as the budget goes. I just would like to see the water left to the developers and not add any more work to the town guys that we have.
Um, just sort of to try to follow up on your comment, Jean, my understanding, and someone please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the developer will install, own and maintain the onsite underground utilities. Am I right on that, Carl?
Yes.
So from that, we can infer that there would be no extra burden on Jim's water department staff. Uh, Steve?
Jean Patton, Livingston, La Journeaux. So I was told that the town would like to own and control all the water and the hydrants in this development. I personally would like to, that's what I was told. I personally would like to echo Jean's comment about them owning their own hydrants and that whole separate water system. But keep in mind, if they sell water to these units, they will have to maintain a specific distance from any contaminants, which could be the lanes, park, lots, whatever, for the well, so they can sell the water to the owners. Am I making myself clear?
Carl?
Yeah, we, we would not be in the water business and you're absolutely correct, sir. Uh, we would, for instance, those options to explore, we have, you know, a lot of land that could be put in conservation that could have a deep allowance that allows the town to come in and develop, you know, have, use the water that's there. And it's right along Maple Street, it's right near your system that's already, it just makes sense. But we would not be in the water business. We would basically just give you the rights to, uh, utilize it to, to your, you know, and that would benefit the whole town. Uh, that, that's sort of what I think, believe that, that the memo talks about that, that option.
I thought the distance was like 200 to 250 feet. Tim, you know, the distance of wells from a municipal system would have to have been 400.
So we do have options on that. That's why the, the town's engineers could look at that and look at the Laramie conservation land and, uh, see how they can make that usable for the town.
Gwen, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah. Gwen, Desert 18 Seymour Farm. This is probably a really dumb question, but I don't know. So my house is on town water, but I do have six wells on my property many years ago used to feed Enfield. How would potentially putting a well up on Laramie Farms affect those wells? We do use those wells for our gardens that are out in the fields at hundreds of feet away from my house. So it's easier for us to pump out of there. So I, does putting a well up there impact those wells on my property?
I don't, I don't know. Um, Carl?
We would be more, uh, further towards the town line. The, the bulk of that conservation land that the town could use is further, for, for wealth capacities for the town could be closer to the town line of, of nor, to the north.
Um, Dan? Dan Reagan?
A couple of questions. Uh, number one is, can you confirm that, um, whether the wells we pump on the development or we improve McConnelwell, that there won't be any incremental cost to the citizens?
Ed, can you take that one?
Well, what we're proposing is to work with them to bring those costs on at their cost, to bring those on to the system.
Ed, I'm sorry, I got the blower here, I couldn't hear you.
Say, we're working with the development to bring those on at their cost. We'll have to look at those things and we'll definitely have to look, work with the developers, we'll get ROI, all those things. We're not trying to shift any cost to on our ratepayers. You know, if they put a filter on the McConnelwell-
Yeah.
-they will be ratepayers at that time. I'm sure there's going to be ongoing maintenance, those types of things. But, you know, we're working with them to bring that on, not on the backs of the ratepayers and the citizens.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and the second thing is, um, my eyesight's not what it used to be. I couldn't read anything that was on that screen and it sounds like only one person on the board got that memo before tonight. Um, I guess I would respectfully request that the planning board consider continuing this issue until the next meeting because no member of the public had the opportunity to do any research, nor did the board. Um, and I think it would only be right to give folks got the opportunity to get into this a little bit further.
I, I think that's a fair request and I, I would also note that late this afternoon, uh, the town did post a few documents and videos on the website. Ed, maybe you could speak to what those are because I only glanced at them.
Yeah, they were the, that was the pro forma that I gave to the, the select board. We posted the pro forma, the couple of videos that I talked about, the, the Strong Town videos, the Urban Free of New Hampshire towns, just so people can understand kind of density, infill, what types of things, what types of impacts that those have on, on communities. So those are on there. I'm going to have Elisa put what I gave to the select board, my executive summary, which kind of just breaks down the pro forma and then has a few, few ideas. You know, we talked a little bit about the water, the water ideas, talked about solid ways, some of the things that we have to have consideration on. So that, those, that final document will be posted tomorrow and everything else is posted today if you want to go out and kind of look at it. Uh, the pro forma may change a little, but that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. We'll be continuing to look at those numbers. But just, just looking at that so people can understand different types of revenue that we may get from a development like this, different types of costs that may, may come out of that and, and what the overall impact is.
Is the memo from Public Works on, posted on the website at this point?
It is not.
Will you do that?
We can do that.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
Thomas Lockevanrod. I echo Mr. Reagan's, uh, statement. I feel that there should be a continuance on this issue, a continuation, uh, otherwise. And in addition to, I ask before this moves out of the initial phases that we're in to potentially be moving on to a next potential phase, that the public, um, at that last meeting gets a closing, um, statement, not related to one issue that's being discussed at that time. But if we've attended multiple meetings, um, that can kind of be the closing statement to the board, um, about the whole, large-
Are you asking for a, a summary statement from the board or are you-
I'm asking that the public in attendance at the last meeting of the initial phase before it potentially goes on to the next be given a chance to make a public statement to the, the planning board on the project as a whole versus just each issue that's on that night's agenda, so to speak.
No?
I believe that should be a part of the final application.
Well, I ask you all to consider.
Okay.
And then as far as this topic, also, sorry, now I got a psych check. Let me formulate, and if you can give me 30 seconds more after working through the rest.
I haven't heard that.
My blood sugar is getting from type 1 diabetic, my blood sugar is getting a little shaky.
Okay. Take care, take care of yourself, and we'll come back to you. Chief Hannon?
I'm not speaking as the chief. So let me get, I just want to get this straight, so, because it kind of sounds like we're kicking the can down the road for something we don't need to. So this was a conceptual to accept the fact that the town is, and the designers have agreed with the town that they're going to work with to alternative source of water. Jim put in a letter that wouldn't actually even come in until the third phase anyway, per what Jim said, right? I don't want to quote you, that he believes that we can support 150, we could probably support the whole project, but we shouldn't allocate all our water to that. So my understanding is, is tonight's board approval would just be that you understand the conceptual, that they're coming to the table to say, hey, I don't believe by the next meeting, any engineer is going to get a study done, which would have to be done for the final anyway. So a continuous is only kicking the can down the road for something that I think everybody's in agreeance that, or everybody sounds like somebody, everybody's on the same page, that hey, any additional cost to the water supply should come from Laramie Farms, not the town of Enfield. So continuous really is, I'm going to be honest, it's just delaying, delaying something for no reason.
Well, we're not, we are not here to approve anything tonight. The approval comes with the final application.
So it's going to continue to the next meeting?
My understanding is there was a request to have people, give people an opportunity to read the memo from Jim Taylor, and to study it, and to ask questions. And I, I don't think that that's necessarily a bad idea. I don't think it will take a whole lot of time.
So it's not delaying a decision that should be made tonight?
No, no, not at all. Not at all.
No vote tonight.
Gotcha, okay.
Because there are no decisions that are made in design review phase.
Sure. So there's really no continuous anyway, because you can have that the next, next meeting anyway?
Well, yeah, but I, I think what we're saying is that we'll come back to this step at the beginning of our next hearing, and we'll give anybody an opportunity to speak to the issue that wants to speak to it. I, I don't expect that anybody will have any, any questions that will provide any different direction than, than what the memo says.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Shirley Green?
I, Shirley Green. I, I just, I think it would be helpful to have the study before we come back to it, the results of the study, otherwise we're just going to be, it's pretty clear what the options are tonight, I think. And the study will give us a better view of which direction we should go.
Well, two things. One is that the ultimate decisions are not made by the planning board. They are made by the select board acting as the water commissioners. So at some point, the select board will work out whatever they work out with a developer after looking at the study data, et cetera, et cetera, and they will come back to us with their recommendation, or maybe it's even their edict, that the town can support 150 new units as it exists now. The plan is to drill a new well, or treat the water in the McConnelwell, or some combination thereof, or some third option that the consulting engineer discovers or proposes. And that will be part of the final application.
That was my point, is the study is important.
Yeah, absolutely, the study is important. Let's see. Sharon?
Thank you very much. I'm going to pass around, I have an Enfield citizens petition, and it's also, it's for the planning board. It's all for, also for Enfield's select board water commissioners. I have 20 signatures on this. It's not a lot, but that's just what I gathered in the last few days, and this is how important this is to many people in this town. This references Tim Jennings' letter that got introduced, was supposed to be introduced back in August, that we were told we had to wait for until this topic was discussed. I have copies of the letter. It got put out in September to this planning board, so it's part of public documents. Tim, this petition is to support the items that were in your letter. I think the important thing is to look at Enfield's history. It's a serious consideration that in 1988, Enfield had a water moratorium since the town wells prior one and two, and the Marsh well could not meet maximum daily demand. One of the things we haven't talked about tonight, as much as we need to, you all, the planning board is looking at zoning rewrite to increase density in Enfield, so that on my three quarters of an acre of land, I can have six units. In the residential one area, you're challenging?
Sharon, wait until we talk about the zoning update, which is a later item on the agenda.
My point is, Enfield is going towards density. So you're telling these gentlemen that you're going to help them find water for 150 units, which you may be able to do, but what you're not really looking at is how much water do we have, for how long a period, for how many more houses? So that for, when developers come to rob, you have a clear idea, and we're not going to get to a point, we need to have those answers now.
Well, Sharon, we don't have the answers now, and if I understand the whole process and understand what Jim Taylor told us, and what he wrote in his memo, is that the consultants are going to come up with the answer to those questions.
Okay, that third question is really the most important question, because you have to look beyond just where we're at tonight. It's part of the whole picture.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Thayer?
Yeah, I'm Harold Thayer, so I live in George Hill. And I have been in touch with the Department of the Water Bureau, who is responsible for looking at water supplies in Enfield. He told me that he has not received a single plan from the developer as to how they're going to get water to the development, whether they're going to use wells or well or water that is already available. And he said that the state will not approve that development until that information has reached them and they have had the opportunity to evaluate it. So.
And we are not going to approve a development unless we know that they have water.
Well, I hope so.
So.
But as Sharon pointed out, it's not just water tomorrow, it's water 20 years down the road. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Did you have anything to add to that, Carl?
I think in terms of logistics, I think we're on the same page. That memo is basically saying what we've been saying all along, is that, as a matter of fact, the town is saying, you know, we have water, but we'd prefer to reserve a buffer. And our team is saying, we respect what you're saying on that, and we would help you continue to provide alternatives for that buffer. And that would be conditioned on final approval of any project. And, you know, the doctor is, is.
He will.
I guess he doesn't want to hear it, but the state, that is correct. The state will only approve a project if it has documentation on water, whether it's on the site, or whether it's through a municipal system, and, you know, the municipal system says that they have the water. So we're actually offering you, you know, the best of both worlds. We're actually saying that even though you, you're looking for a buffer, we're willing to participate in that buffer in many ways, and we would have that permit, and it would, the permit would be, your final approval would be conditioned on that permit. So you have, you're protected in many ways also. And the state is correct that they, they want to see that you have water. We want to see that you have water, and we want to help you with that buffer. That, that's like a great thing. And that is all, would be, in, in the legal aspects of permitting, that is a condition of final approval, that you would have that condition placed on there. And that memo was perfectly written, because it goes to a condition you can point to and say, see that memo? Reprove your, your project conditioned on that memo and all other permits. That's the proper way to do it, and you're doing it in the right way, and you're doing it with belt and suspenders, and along with the, that the state requirement. So at, at some point, I think, and some people mentioned this, the, the water and the water buffer and the extra capacity, you know, we, we are willing to engage with you on that. And that would be a condition of final approval of the, say, the last half. We wouldn't get that half unless we had worked with you successfully in producing on that. But the, the condition would be placed on there during final. It's not fair legally for, not, and I'm not saying you're doing this, because it doesn't appear you're not, but at a preliminary stage, we've been going at this for months, and the questions are really, in all fairness, they're, they're conditions of final approval, final design, final design, you know, every foot candle, every, every, you know, calculation on drainage, all of that is really in final phase. I've never been, I've never been this long at a preliminary application to close a preliminary, so we can at least move into final to give you those answers. At some point, you know, to go through every little detail that would, is really legally the final application phase, not preliminary. Preliminary just means, you know, we have a, we have a process we can point to. So you did a great thing by putting upon us that promissory relative to that memo, and you've satisfied 5.9, which is water supply, and we've agreed to it. Legally, we should be able to move on, and we should be able to at least be, have the option, the opportunity to go into final design and actually close the preliminary hearing, because this has been a string of preliminary hearings put forth on, you know, final design. I mean, most boards would give a preliminary, not approval, but a preliminary concurrence that, yes, move forward into your design and close the preliminary process. You know, I'm just asking that, you know, from a respectful thing, that these, these questions are final design process, not preliminary, and we've assured you on water supply that we would provide that. So that's just one example.
Yeah. I, I guess my, my philosophy, having done nothing this big in 20 odd years of land use board experience, but having done some very controversial projects in a different town, in a different state, and a process that we've used in creating our master plan, public buy-in is very, very important. And I would much rather put a lot of time in upfront in this design review phase and air all the concerns, so that when we get, so that when you get to the final application and we have it in front of us, there aren't a lot of questions, or, I mean, I'm sure we're not going to be able to satisfy 100% of the general public, but at least we will have done our job in letting the public point out their areas of concern. And it's my belief that the final application review will go very much quickly, perhaps even more quickly than you're accustomed to, because we've laid the foundation in design review. That's where we are. Yes, I promise to get back.
Just a question based on your statement, where you said, we won't be able to satisfy every member of the public, the citizens of this town. Do you have a threshold number in mind of?
No, no, no.
We actually have to satisfy the ordinance.
Dan is right. We, we, we go by what's in the town zoning ordinance, and that may not satisfy 100% of the people in the town. And we are rewriting the zoning ordinance, and maybe that's going to satisfy 5% more of the population. I don't know. We're going to have a vote on it. We will have a vote.
Next steps.
I would like to, I would like to continue to finish the list. This is the list in the site plan review regulations, not the ordinance.
Right.
We need the ordinance.
There's not a lot on it.
Right, and I'd like to finish it, and I'd like to request that you close the hearing so we can at least get to final design. I'd like to request you close the hearing tonight, because we've, we've provided this. It seems like, I just don't want it, I mean, I'm not worried about being quick or anything like that. I do agree with you, Mr. Chair, on getting things right, but getting things right in the process of what the state law says, and that is, all these items are in final design, not preliminary. Preliminary by state law and case law is that, do we meet the provisions of the ordinance and the criteria that we've earned or the relief? And if the answer is yes, then we're allowed by right to move forward into final. It seems to me that if this is strung out and delayed, and then we're in zoning season, we're put in peril. The longer this is strung out, and it's not fair, we meet the criteria, we think we've earned, more than earned a closure of the preliminary, so we can actually get into the final and actually engage and get you all these answers. I feel badly when someone asks a question that's specific to final design, and we haven't been able to even get there yet, even though we voluntarily are almost ready for that. We're, we're on the edge, and I just don't want to be pulled off the edge of the cliff unfairly. Now all of a sudden zoning season's here, and what if you change the zoning? And, you know, by right, we should have been closed on preliminary, and it just puts us, puts our client at peril, and we've done nothing but, you know, provide advance information. And I, I get, Mr. Chair, what you're saying, but I think we've earned the right to have this closed, so we can proceed into final design. And I don't think it's fair that we string out several months to go through every single item on this list. I'm, I'd happy to stay here all night if we have to, but it's just not fair to continue, and then we're going into Christmas, and then, you know, the new year, warrant season, everything else, it's just, you know, we have a timeline, we have to meet even on variances, and it seems like we're being strung out, so the clock ticks out. And I don't think you're doing that, but that's the reality, that's what's happening, and it's not fair to us. I just want to put that on record. So I respectfully request that, you know, we finish this list, because I know we've delivered on this list, and we're promising any of the gaps that are needed in final design. I'd ask the board to close this hearing. We're in November, we've been doing this for, I don't know how long, and we're happy to, to all the detail that you need, but we, we need to legally be in the zone to be able to do that detail. So it's a kind of a catch 22.
I, I can almost assure you that when you file your final application, unless there's some unforeseen delay on your part, that you will be operating under the current set of zoning regulations. of zoning regulations.
But that's not the law. The law is, I'm just an engineer, but doing this for a long time, it has to be, the preliminary application, you have more than enough information to close that preliminary application. Then the clock starts ticking. It's not when we decide to file final. And it's just not fair to us. So I just want to put that out there. We'd be happy to answer any of these questions. We just need to be able to engage on final, to do it.
What RSA are you citing?
It has to do with closing a preliminary application. And when that clock starts ticking.
I don't believe that there is a clock after a design review phase hearing. But let's, let's argue, let's argue about that offline.
Yeah.
And let's, the board willing to stay and push through the last few.
Yes.
Okay, let's do it.
Is it warned in your agenda?
It's preliminary.
It's preliminary.
It's not a?
It's fairly inconsequential, the things that are left.
No. You can do it.
We can do it.
We were putting, we were putting that stuff there as information.
Let's do it. We've done water supply, section 5.10 is sewage disposal. What are your plans for sewage disposal?
Full gravity sewer onsite. We have one pump station that's onsite that probably are probably maintained, but everything, 99% of it's gravity. Sewer designed per state standards, per your wastewater treatment standards, per your DPW standards, per the town standards, all day long, straight up, good stuff. The items 1 through 5 are all met in spades and that's pretty great, pretty great actually.
Okay, board members, any questions on their plans for sewage?
Third-party engineers going to review sewage design in final. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I'm sure the state will also have a review.
Yes, sir, they also review and there's a full, there's actually three or four layers. There's the town layer, there's the, I'm going fast, the third-party reviewer for the town. There's the wastewater treatment entity that reviews also. All of those are required to sign off, literally sign off on the application forms before it even goes to the state. Then the state does a review as well. And that, the actual, there's a final permit issued by the state for sewer after all you guys and girls are happy with that.
Except yes, Carl.
Snow removal.
So the criteria is that, you know, you review the snow removal plans. We're doing the green snow certified snow pro. We would have snow disposal areas on the site that are environmentally friendly, that are appropriate, that are put on top of plants that can't take that, you know, all that type of thing. That talks about 1 and 2 and 3, the plant for snow removal, if our insufficient storage areas exist. We have, you know, plenty of areas out there, open space that we could provide snow excess if we needed it. And through the green snow pro program, you know, if we have a lot of volume of snow, we're not salting that. It's really just the last layer that the green snow program. So if we're plumbing a lot, there's a ton of volume, that's separated and properly protected. So, you know, we have plenty of areas on the site for that and we would be showing that for the final design as well, but it was all pre-planned with the landscaping already.
Would you be willing to use some of the same chemicals or better than what the town uses?
I don't know what the town, what does the town use?
Jim?
Just regular salt. Stuff that comes off the barges and.
Kathleen Corrigan.
Portsmouth. What's that?
On the dirt roads.
Is it Corrigan or?
No.
Or is it used for the brine?
Oh, the brine, yeah, 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 that's, that's different.
Right. The certified green snow program does include all those options and, you know, even around, you know, the areas that are sensitive to apartment buildings and everything, they use something that might be a little different, you know, that is better than just regular old salt. But that's all part of the program that we are promising to use as part of the final design permit, which is certified green snow pro program by DES.
Okay. Any other questions on snow removal, snow storage, 5.12 ADA compliance?
All of the applicable requirements for ADA by the federal guidelines would be followed.
Tom had a question.
I'm not taking questions from the public at this point because we're trying to get through this and.
We'll take them at the end.
We'll take them at the end.
ADA, section 12 would be, obviously, that's a federal law that we would comply with that.
Flood plane?
We have no.
I don't think that applies.
We have no flood plane on the site.
What are your plans for solid waste recycling and disposal?
That's all privately managed, privately maintained.
Privately paid for?
And privately paid for, everything. So everything from solid waste disposal, screening of all those facilities, really the onsite manager takes care of that as well, but we do have those facilities and also the recycling and all of that, it's a private package. So there's no burden or cost to the town to deal with any of, you know, our trash or recyclers, we handle all of that.
Okay. Safety review is something that we'll get from our town people. As-built plans, we will get from you when they are available.
That's all standard. Standard.
Protection of natural and historic features. Have you identified any natural or historic features?
There have been anecdotal areas, you know, that stone walls, they're important to us, the trees are important to us. So we've redesigned the side area that you had mentioned, that side area where the slopes, slopes are on the side of our accessway. We've redesigned that and tightened those slopes up and so that we don't have to, there's parallel stone walls on our property, parallel to yours. And you had a suggestion to, you know, tighten up that design. So we did that as part of the, this channel of the stream and the slopes and keeping the trees in that area. So we've actually updated the preliminary design to reflect that as we move into final. So those items are basically, you know, where the stone walls and things, where there is an area of a stone wall that we're actually impacting, we would take, the requirement for the final plans would be to take those stones and store them and then reuse them into the landscape on the project. There, I mean, there was no formal historic identified areas on our site. And we'll recheck with the state on that and the state tells us that too, but we're respectful. I mean, we're, about half our site is already going to be put back into conservation. So, but natural historic features, going through the list, we don't believe there are architectural features that are historic, that are identified as meeting that criteria or historic buildings. Cellulose, any of that, we don't, we haven't seen any of that. And that's, that's item 17.
General standards are something that the board deals with and I don't think you have any input. It's not clear how, this is our own rather subjective.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know how the board would evaluate these items.
We will discuss that when we get the final evaluation, the final application. That having been said, are there any other questions from board members?
I'll just give you a little information on the clock that he was referring to. It's RSA 67612. And when we vote to close the preliminary hearings, he has 365 days to file his formal petition. And during that time, he's protected from any zoning changes that happen in that interim. If he waits longer than a year, then any new zoning changes would apply to his project.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Thank you for looking that up. Somebody care to make a motion to close the design review here?
We want any.
Oh, yeah, question, I'm sorry.
Just coming back to snow storage, if it's in piles and where those will be located on this property and how they'll drain, directed to the board director.
I think those.
I also have an objection based on, sorry to be a thorn in the side, but a toward having the letter that was passed around or the Jim's letter or, sorry, sorry. That didn't get an opportunity to be posted by the town as the pro forma information regarding this all was by the town. So I just find that that should be public information shared across the same platform.
And we have, Ed Morris has indicated that that information will be on the town website in short order.
They didn't get, give the public any chance to read it whereas I give the public a chance to read it and either decide or not, or decide not to come to this, this planning board meeting to potentially ask questions.
Well, if we have wasted your time because the memo says what you needed to hear, which seems to be the general consensus, I apologize sincerely, but things have been moving incredibly quickly on this. Dan?
Dan Regan, I concur. Half an hour ago, maybe an hour ago at this point, you had said, yes, you saw the rationale of continuing that section of the meeting. Then we heard a plea by the developer to wrap this thing up. Water is among the top three on my list of things I'm still concerned about. He's got 365 days. We can't change the zoning ordinances. If we do, it doesn't apply, is what we just heard. A little disappointed that the developer seemed to have a louder voice in this than the public.
I am sorry that you interpret it that way. I think we can have the discussion on the memo at our next meeting. And it can be applied, the results of that can be applied when the final application is filed and discussed. Gwen.
Gwen Dessert, 18 Seymour Farm Drive. Couple of things. As far as the natural and historic features, I know we've discussed the well that's on the property. I don't know if that's considered as historic. I think, are you guys still considering leaving it as is?
I believe that, can I answer that?
Yes.
The existing well is a dug well right up against the stream in that area and it appeared to have filled up the well up historically with the stream. We're not impacting that area. I believe we're not impacting that area. So, I mean, it's a safety hazard because it's a dug well, we wouldn't want anyone falling in. We would suggest that it be filled in because it's a safety hazard and it has no usage. I would really, I mean, I'm a fan of historic preservation and everything, but it's a dug well. It's very rough, it's a hole in the ground. There's no, there's no defining features of artisten ship or anything like that. But just anecdotally, you know. And, you know, regarding the letter, if anything, this is the good news. We're suggesting, we're promising the belt and suspenders. So we're not asking the town to just accept on blind faith that you have the water. We know you have the water. But what you've basically said in the letter is actually protecting your interest, sir. The letter is basically saying, you know, we have the water, but we don't want to use our buffer. We want more for a buffer. So I think that actually it's appropriate for us to, to acknowledge that letter and I'm not finished.
We just want the opportunity to review it, that's all.
Oh, yeah, well, same, but we actually have, we're acknowledging that the town is asking or suggesting or requiring that we acknowledge that you need a buffer and we're actually proposing that. So that's actually a good thing.
Well, yes.
And so for you to review the letter that basically says something that's even more than what you would typically be expecting and we're agreeing to it already, that's a good thing. And that we've still, that'll never go away, we have to address that during final design. So as a matter of fact, that should be a win, that should be considered a win in your eyes. And I'm just saying that we have rights, this gentleman, you know, we have, we have rights.
You don't need to continue, all right? I'm always ready to make a decision to go further.
I just want to put that out and I, total respect for you, sir.
All right. Gwen, one more comment?
So back in August, I had questioned about the number of units they're able to build. Has it been determined if they can use the CB district, approximately 1.6 acres in their calculations? And because that is going to impact what they're going to be designing. And if not, then I don't believe they meet the zoning because the four town homes that are not on public water will take up four acres. You can put, the zoning is one acre if you're not on town water and sewer. So I think that needs to be addressed before they start doing their planning, is to let them know, to make sure that they don't plan for more units than zoning allows. Because what they're, what they have on the last thing is showing they can build up to 308 units. The way I read the zoning, it doesn't allow that.
I think that's a point that the attorneys will have to look into and come to an agreement between what the town feels its zoning ordinance as and what the developer interprets the zoning ordinance as. And that's the kind of thing that will, I think, be done in a final application procedure review. And Carl, you've taken a note of that?
You're, you are noted, you're noted, I know both, but yes, that gets worked out for final. If there's some blip that comes up out of the blue that, you know, the town didn't think of or something happened or you have an opinion, that gets flushed out with finals on that. Either way, the needle on that is not really that much, but we'd be happy to engage and put that process for final, yes.
Kurt, did you have a question or are you going to make a motion?
My comments. The change from design to final in the Site Plan Reg, section 213, page 3, Final Application Review states, "Any applicant desiring final approval for site plans has defined in these regulations and RSA 674:4 shall apply to the board in writing on the designated application form and pay the required fees, period." So you just fill out the form and pay the fee, the draw, and you move to final.
That's part of the final application, right? But we would need all the plans and studies and details for that.
Well, this is to start final review.
Right.
What I'm reading is you just fill out the form and say, "We want final review."
That's correct, but to be responsible application, we have to have everything ready for you. But all we're asking, we're not even asking for that, we're just asking to close the preliminary so we can proceed, working towards that, that requirement, sir.
Okay, okay. He needs to have a complete application, not just fill out the form and, and pay the fees.
Sorry.
Okay. Sharon? I can't, I can't see your hand because Kurt's head is in the way.
Can you just clarify one thing for me? In the final review phase, there can be public comment, I think.
Yes.
But it can only be from the abutters or it can be from anybody?
Sharon, the way our rules of procedure are written, and I quoted the relevant sections or paragraphs at the very beginning of this meeting.
Right.
Is that anyone, no, abutters and interested parties can give oral or written. Is that anyone, no, abutters and interested parties can give oral or written testimony at any public hearing that this board conducts. Let me go back to it.
It's a yes.
So the, yeah, it's, it's a yes at the discretion of the chair. And I hope you will agree that I have been more than fair in encouraging questions and comments from the public.
I just want a clarification on that, that's all.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, it's a yes. Motion?
I move that we close the preliminary hearings for the Laramie Farms development.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. No one's opposed. Motion is carried. The design review phase hearing for Laramie Farms is closed.
Thank you, we look forward to working with the town, proceeding into final, all with details.
We look forward to working on your final application, hopefully soon.
Thank you very much.
Got a year.
We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
I feel bad for today.
Always. Okay. There are no conceptuals tonight.
Thank God.
Tim? Yes, you certainly should. Tim, do you want to talk about the zoning update? Well, let's, let's take a one-minute break or two-minute break to allow the audience to leave. If they want, we're not kicking you out.
Not a fan of getting things that they're getting, I'm not a fan of getting things the day of the meeting.
I get that, I get it.
Neither.
David, have I been demoted back to alternate?
No, you're, oh, yeah, you have. You're demoted.
I have to go.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.
Thanks for staying, Ben.
For what?
I need to lose a bit of your attention.
Okay.
To the wells up behind so and so.
I have a dog that's got his legs crossed.
Okay. Jim, Jim and Gwen, could you take your conversation outside, please? I'd like, I'd like to restart the meeting.
So it can leave?
It is almost 9:30. Tim?
Okay.
Where are we on zoning?
All right, so here's where we're at. We need another day or two to, to put all the changes that the planning commission suggested and format those and get them into the master document for the zoning ordinance. I, we tried our best to get it done today and get it to you tonight, but we just, just ran out of steam. So what I suggest is that when we get that done, we'll send it to Rob and that it be forwarded to the board members and also posted on the town website. Or somehow make it available to the community. And that when you get it, we're, I really need everyone to read it very, very carefully and thoroughly. I've been asking you to do that all along, but this, this time it's really important. Check references, look at formatting, you see anything out of whack, if it's not quite, doesn't make sense. That's the kind of thing we need to know. And I would suggest that if you come up with a correction or an edit or a suggestion, that you send that via email to Rob. He'll then get it to me, and we'll, we'll fit it in in a way that will identify it as a correction from what we, what we just published. And so on the 3rd of December, that's a working session, we should have two to three hours of focused time to finish this thing up. But you really, really got to read it for the next week or so. Yeah, that's, and so, sorry we couldn't make the deadline, but we'll, we'll get it there to you in the next, next couple of days.
Logistical question. Rob, you are out of town tomorrow and Friday, or just tomorrow?
Just tomorrow.
Okay, so you get a whole extra day because Rob is out of town.
I'll be back tomorrow afternoon, so.
Twelve hours.
You get a half a day.
It'll be Friday before we.
It'll be Friday.
Okay.
And so now, you may want a printed copy. Because of formatting and large footers that have to be on there temporarily, it's like 120 pages. But Rob can get that done. So just let him know by what email that you want a printed copy, perhaps.
He doesn't deliver, though.
Yeah, just, I would want a printed copy, that way I can mark it up.
You're working in Microsoft Word?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the December 3rd meeting, so from the timeline, what we had talked about too, so then the board would then kind of wrap it, close it to get it to bad, to get it to
To get it to.
Public hearing in December in time. So the December 17th would potentially be the first public hearing to have on it and still have time pending comment.
Yeah, we promised, I think, two weeks of public review, and we're going to miss that by, I think, a day.
I don't think so, I think, as long as it's done by Saturday, it, so if, if Wednesday night on the 3rd, it was wrapped
Right.
And then could be posted Thursday or Friday, you're still well within by the 10, like, or well, I guess.
The 10-day.
10-day window.
No, yeah, no.
But you, two weeks, yeah, you're right.
10, 10 days for the requirement.
Yeah.
By the state, but we had, we had hoped to go for two weeks for general public review, so we're like a day off on that.
And then I think if there are any changes based on that hearing, and there may very well be, we've got plenty of time to schedule a second hearing.
Absolutely. David, hold your comment to the end, please.
Well, it's, it's a process issue.
David, hold your comment to the end, please.
It's a right to know, so if you don't care about that, then.
I care about that, but I'm asking you to hold your comment to the end of the meeting when we have public comment. And it won't be long, because I think we're not going to do any reports from select board or land use or myself. Does the board agree that we should move the approval of the minutes to our next meetings? Yes. Old business? Any new business? No public comments? Dr. Bofay?
This is a, this is a question for all of you to have considered, but my understanding of the right to know is it's serial written electronic communication between members of a committee, a quorum of a committee, is considered a meeting. Am I wrong?
No, you're not.
So. How come the public is not involved in this then?
Because there is no serial communication.
Sure there is.
It's, it's a distribution of working draft documents.
That's communication, that's electronic communication.
But it's one-way.
And it goes back to Tim to work on via Rob.
So it needs to go to Rob?
It needs to, it's going to Rob, but then it's going back to Tim to be compiled. How is that different?
How the hell else are we going to do this?
Your decision, you're the ones who are going to have to live with it.
Would you like a copy of the report?
So there will not.
I would.
Okay, Tim will send you one.
There will not be a serial group of four people communicating. There will never be more than two people.
It's the whole board.
No. It's not the whole board. To Rob, to me, to Rob, to Tim.
Okay.
It is Tim, to Rob.
Try and run that in court.
To Dan. We will. And I think we're on very solid ground. But again, you know, if somebody challenges us, the court will decide.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, for example, we had a Zoom meeting the other day, and I wanted to get a couple of board members to participate. And we ended up with four of us starting the meeting, and Dan.
I just walked up and left before David got on.
So we are paying attention to that. And all this is, is a logistical thing of trying to get.
I understand what you're trying to do and why, but I think that the different interpretations of that law and strict interpretation probably puts you at some jeopardy.
Would it make a difference if the draft version that Tim is working on were handed out to the board members tonight? You could certainly ask for a copy of it, as you have.
Sure.
It would make a difference?
No.
No? Okay.
But this is in a meeting, this is in a warned meeting.
Dan?
David, I just want to say thank you to the board. We maybe don't all recognize what many do, how hard it's all been working every five or six meetings in the course of a month.